See? Thank you. Okay. That's weird.
It is.
We're calling the Word of the Committee meeting for February fifteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. Doctor Ever?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the School Board, administration attendants, also guests, parents in attendance. We have a number of items to present in committee this evening. Uh, before we do, I want to take a moment and remind our McGuffey families, those that may be watching at home, uh, that there is no school tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow is our Senior Project Act eighty day. And then also, um, Monday, uh, where we would have had our second make up day. School is in session on Monday, February nineteenth, due to the cancellation that was on January nineteenth of twenty twenty four. So just a, a quick reminder about both of those. Uh, I'm gonna take, uh, my first committee actually up to the podium. I'm gonna ask, um, Ms. Boone to join me at the podium, please. This is Christie Boone. Because we're celebrating thirty years of being a dedicated teacher and educator. And I, oh. Yep, okay. So thirty years in education, that used to be something that, uh, as teachers, administrators, uh, those in education, whatever capacity, that was no brainer. Thirty, thirty-five years, forty years, um, you would often find that, and that wasn't really anything celebrated. Wasn't, it was just almost taken for granted. Um, but we live in a different time, and we know the challenges that we face as educators. And to see folks get to thirty years is gonna be quite an accomplishment, and it is in this case. So let me read this. Well, look at you, you don't look at me. We'll do this, okay. So Christie graduated from California University in December of nineteen ninety-three. And was hired ten days later. How about that? As a permanent substitute to teach special education at McGuff- McGuffey Intermediate School, now Claysville Elementary School. During her first year of substitute teaching in room two fourteen, the blizzard of nineteen ninety-three, how about that? Occurred. Right, we all remember nineteen ninety-three blizzard. Numerous snow cancellations occurred resulting in students attending school until the end of June. It's interesting. Teachers even had to attend on a Saturday to make up the missed days. Is that the first or only time? Only time, okay. In August of nineteen ninety-four, Christie returned as a permanent substitute for the next school year. And was hired permanently shortly thereafter. Her room was moved to the fifth floor to room five oh two, where she remained for twenty-six years. Wow, in the same room. Yeah, didn't ask to transfer across the hall or anything, no? No? Okay. Only to move to room five sixteen for her last three years of teaching. As a special education teacher at Claysville Elementary, Christie has taught at each grade level, which is also quite amazing. In closing, Christie values the years she has spent in McGuffey. She expresses her appreciation to have had the opportunity to work with so many fantastic educators who've spent countless hours planning and creating to give each student the best education possible. With that, Christie, on behalf of the School Board, the entire district, every student and family that you touch, thank you for your thirty years here at McGuffey.
Thank you.
And we have a plaque to present to you. That says, presented by the McGuffey School District to Christie Boone, in appreciation for thirty years of outstanding service, nineteen ninety-four to twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, um, as educators and professionals within the McGuffey School District, um, we are continuously evaluating the specific needs of our students, the circumstances that they live under. Um, we're experiencing a growth in mental health crisis. Um, this is not just locally, of course, this is nationally. And it has been a challenging year to this point, trying to support the social, emotional, mental needs, health needs of our students. Um, I think what we do is a nice job here at McGuffey, but can we always improve? Can we always do better? Absolutely hundred percent. So with that in mind, as a district, we've been investigating some options. And tonight I'd like to introduce to you one of those ideas, and it's the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, otherwise known as DARE. To present to us tonight the resources available through DARE, I have Deputy Elizabeth Davidson from Washington County Sheriff's Department, Chief Roger Zeminski, and Elizabeth, I'm gonna ask you to also introduce.
Yeah, so, uh, this came in, uh, this is Damarowski, he's our second DARE officer. Um, he's relatively new to DARE, um, not new to policing, obviously, but, uh, so he'll be, uh, primarily taking over, um, through the school to kind of help shift some of the load. We teach in a lot of schools in Washington County, so, uh, we now have two to task for that, so.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, so, for those who don't know me, and, um, just let me know if I need to get closer, but I'm gonna stay kind of between the words. So my name is Elizabeth Davidson and, um, Washington County Sheriff's Department, so I'm their DARE instructor. I also do public relations, uh, and all community outreach. So I've been in that position about six years, fifteen years in law enforcement. Um, so just to kind of give you a little bit of background, exactly what he said, what is DARE? DARE is drop abuse resistance education. Um, it is a program that we use, um, that has been around for a really long time. It's always taught by uniformed officers, uh, and this program basically focuses on good decision-making skills. And we'll go over some of the curriculum here in a little bit, but, um, it's been around a long time. What they have realized is that enforcement is not enough, right? Prevention is key, so education. And the more that we get people involved in that conversation, it's not just kids, it's community, it's parents, it's, you know, teachers, the better off we are, okay? The number one reason why children don't do drugs is parent disapproval. But if we're not having those conversations, we need to kind of fill in some of the blanks, okay? So, um, we kind of bridge some of those gaps. So we are certified K through twelve. Um, again, this is our K through four education, which is something you can just look at. I know that we're kind of shifting towards fifth and sixth. Um, but we do coasters and we kind of handle the basics. So what to do if there's an emergency? We think that that's something that kids would know, but really when you start asking from the perspective, they don't have a good understanding. An example of this is if your cat was lost, would you call the police? And every kid's like, yes. And the firemen, and everybody, kid, call everybody. Right, but it's not, it's not actually something that police or firemen actually handle, it's not a resource. But can we explain some of those things, um, you know, stranger danger, some of the, the common things that you see? If they kind of build a rapport, and we start building rapport with this kid. So our fifth and sixth, really that's a pivotal time because kids are really kind of transitioning. This is where we see that they're offered the most things. Um, bathing is a huge problem pretty much anywhere that we go, so face for a big discussion. So the curriculum that we have, number one, we teach, number, the first week we teach responsibility. The second week we dive into what drugs actually are. So we define it. Nothing in particular, we don't talk about specific things, okay? Um, we talk about what addiction looks like, and the best example I can give is caffeine. Anybody in here drink caffeine, right? If you don't have it, what happens? We get a headache, we get nauseous, and we kind of have kids relate to that topic. Um, because they've all seen their parents cranky and a headache, right? And they don't get their caffeine. But caffeine is a stimulant, so same thing like your cigarettes and your vape. So we really kind of dive into those things. Risking consequences, the next one we talk about, fourth week four is peer pressure, so we talk about resistance strategy. How do we say no? Saying no is tough, right? Uh, probably the worst thing that dare ever came up with is just saying of the drugs, because it's a horrible slogan. Um, because if it was just that easy, I'd be out of a job, right? Um, so we talk about, uh, peer pressures, and week five we do stress management. These kids are under a lot of stress, okay? So how do we manage that? What does that look like? How do we experience stress? So we talk about those things. Week six and seven are communication skills. So six is verbal, seven is non-verbal communication. Um, week eight, we really heavily talk about bullying. What is bullying? The different types of bullying. People don't realize that there's four different types of bullying. So we really talk about what that looks like. Um, week nine, we do a good citizen, so they have to go out into the world and interview a person and ask about a time when somebody helped them. We try to connect and link the two lessons, that they're bullying leaves a lasting impression, but kindness also leaves one as well. So those two are linked. And then week ten, we do a fun wrap-up, which is, uh, trivia, and we talk about what happens when we need help, right? Because we've been all these lessons, and we talk about, here's how we help other people. What happens when we need help? So this is our fifth and sixth education. Again, they practice skits, so like week four we do skits, week, uh, six and seven we do skits. So they get to really act out those resistance strategies. They can have, they have a good time, and they get to be able to really put those role plays into, into place, okay? So I know this isn't something you guys talk about, like this is seventh and eighth. So again, just building on that good decision-making skills, okay? Which is super important. We talk about conflict, what does refusal look like? What are our community standards? So we look at those things, norms, building, high school, uh, again, it gets a little bit tougher because they're older, you know, but we talked about our community perception again, drugs, alcohol, consequences, all those things, being up standard. These are some of my DARE kids. Uh, I'm super proud of this program, since I've taught it, I, I keep it in contact with most of my kids. We're in a lot of the schools. Um, I think really ones that we're not in at the current moment, um, is Sartires Houston, because they have a DARE officer, Tannenbaum, because they have a DARE officer, and Peter Soundship, because they have a DARE officer. But we're in pretty much all the schools. I enjoy what I do, very passionate about it. I have two children of my very own, right? So I, my goal in this world is to leave, uh, this place better than I found it, right? This young man, he has three children, right? Same concept, he, he wants to leave this place better than he found it, so. So this is some of my DARE kids, some of the community programs that we offer. You get this, um, regardless if you choose DARE or not. It was just some of the things that we have, okay? So, um, I'm an Alice instructor, I'm also staff certified. We do social media presentations for parents, students, and educators. Bathing and marijuana enhancement, we do a hidden plane site. A lot of times people don't know what paraphernalia looks like. If I said to you, hey, what's heroin look like? If you've never seen heroin, you don't know, right? So what we do is we, um, set up a bedroom scene and have parents tour it. They get to actually touch things that are, obviously look like real drugs, but they're not. And then we talk about, this is what the symptoms look like. This is what you should be looking for. So it gets people really kind of educated about the, the topic in general. Some of the other things that we have, uh, very proud of this one, we got a grant last year, our pedal roadster. So, um, this is for older kids around like, um, homecoming. They can actually drive a buggy. We have B S, BAC goggles, so they range in levels of impairment, and they get to drive the buggy, okay? They get to see, because of course every kid that comes in is like, ah, I can do this, no problem. They get behind the wheel of the car, and they're not gonna fail them, right? Or things like, uh, stacking cups, something that's so simple, right? Growth motor skills should be really, really easy. But even at the slightest impairment, they're reaching over here, and the cup is here, right? They get the linkage between the two, that, okay, I'm impaired, right? What is impairment? We think kids know what impairment is. They don't now, right? So they're able to do those things and actually physically experience what impairment is without being impaired, right? So some of the other things that we do, um, and I think we've actually done three days for Joe Walker. But we have literacy events, High Five Fridays, we give high fives to kids, give words of encouragement. These are all our programs, which is, I don't think you've given me enough time to like really go over all of them in advance, but, um, we're really proud of our interaction with the community. Um, Sheriff Andrew O'Nis, again, passed us both school time to this, like he believes in children, he believes in education. He was a DARE officer, um, in South Park before he became a sheriff. So, I mean, the proof is in the pudding, we're understaffed just like anywhere else, but we have two people completely tasked with it. And, um, again, I, I don't do this because of paycheck, I literally do it because I love this job, right? So hopefully, we can build our partnership with you guys and start meeting some of the needs of your community, whatever they are. You tell us, and you pick from the list, we'll come do it. Okay? Uh, I think that's about it. Again, some of our programs, just some of the things that we've done. Got any questions?
I just wanted to add, so, one thing we want to work on is getting more, uh, parent programs and parent involvement, uh, after school at night, putting on these programs. They've hosted these before, we looked at three specific ones, social media, dangers of social media.
Hidden plane sites, and I think you guys talked about maybe the enhancement with, um, bathing.
And bathing, so, uh, we look to, uh, schedule, hopefully we get approval, we can move forward, we can schedule some parent nights, uh, parent educational nights, uh, we can open up six through twelve, or five through twelve, four through twelve, whatever we need to do. Um, and we'll promote that, uh, but that's one thing that, uh, we saw was a, a lacking thing that we, we have currently. Uh, we had a mental health night, uh, on Open House, we had one parent attempt. Um, so these things will be pushing out, will be promoting, and we think we can get some good things going with them.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, we're seeming to be having a very difficult time hiring a police officer for a medical school. Do you have any idea where we may be able to find one, or how we may?
We are in the same boat. We, we currently, and this unheard of, we currently have four positions available full-time spots with retirement and bennies, like, we're in the same boat. Where, I mean, that's what I said, we're understaffed, I, I mean, I literally mean we're understaffed. Um, and I honestly, I, I think there's, there's a shortage everywhere. So, and it's not just, uh, police, teachers, and every, everywhere that you go to, but it's just, we find it, there's not enough people going, going into these trades and these skills anymore, which is bad for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
So next, um, the McGuffey Education Foundation, uh, has begun recently an engraved brick fundraiser, fundraising campaign. Uh, here to give the board an update on the foundation is Carl Group, Mr. Group.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Um, after following Mrs. Boone and the Dare pro- Um, mine's a lot less important. So anyway, uh, when I'm here, I'm gonna, here to push two things. Um, one is the Alumni Foundation itself. Um, these two R codes will allow you access to these, you do not have to be an alumni to join this foundation. If you're, uh, you're already.
Thank you.
But it's real simple, you can do it with your phone, just.
Thank you.
Look at the Q R code. Thank you. They're all sticking together. Anyway, this is, it's very simple to join the Alumni Foundation, and, uh, you don't have to be a graduate, like I said, um. We're not asking for any money from you or any time, uh, we just want to get a, a base of people that are interested in McGuffey. So moving from that, um, the Alumni Foundation brick sales. This is the first brick order. My wife and I ordered this brick at our last Alumni Foundation meeting, I don't know if Boone ordered it. Um, this brick with this insignia on here is eighty-six dollars. Another twenty will be to a coaster or, uh, paperweight. So for a hundred and fifty dollars to get this, where does the money go? Um, can you pass that around, Mr. Group?
Sure.
Sure. Don't drop it on your toes. Twenty-five dollars of every brick goes to one of our organizations. I have a list here. Baseball, boys and girls tennis, wrestling, boys basketball, cheerleading, golf, FFA Ag, girls basketball, track, and cross-country football, rifle softball, marching band, boys and girls soccer. Okay, so when you order the brick? You go online. You can order it with a five-hole payment like this. You can order it, write a check, address is in there. Or you can go on the QR code again and order. You already ordered.
And you specify the organization you want, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, there is a little trick to it.
Thank you.
We try to get the soil a little better than it does. You go online to order, you put down there your, a red statement in there that says, stick this link and you can pick who you're going to donate it to, which organization. If you do that, and just do that, you'll pick the organization, but it won't go to the part where you're ordering the brick. You go down through, order your brick, and you can go back in and the link will tie it to our organization. And it puts it on a spreadsheet. You can order with Skype. If you've never ordered with Skype, you can go on there and give a credit card number and it pays it. That money all comes to our organization. And our organization with that spreadsheet, we know who orders, who pays, where they want the funds to go to, the twenty-five percent. Not twenty-five percent, twenty-five dollars. The twenty-five dollars of the eighty-six goes to one of our organizations. We're going to pay those out quarterly. So far, we have about fifty bricks ordered. Where's my paper? And we'll send a check out quarterly to those organizations. McGuffey Alumni Foundation beneficiary of seven. People said just give it back to the organization. Golf has three, football has seven. So quarterly, we'll be sending checks out to those organizations. I have it here. Like I said, there's fifty bricks ordered. We have about eleven came in. The nice place, part about this organization, shipping's free. If we order a thousand bricks, they'll bring it up on a semi and unload it with no charge. The installation is going to be taken care of by the, the, those tech-
Western area.
Western area career technology. They're going to, it'll be part of their curriculum. They'll come up. They're going to start at the entrance to the football stadium, by the ticket booth. That area was designated when the stadium was built to take bricks like this. So it's preparing it. It's, it's pretty nice because you pop a brick out and put two down. So it's, it's a pretty good deal there. That keeps the cost down. We have flyers, there's the tri-fold flyers there and there's a poster. We have them at Joe Walker, Claysville. When you go in to sign into the school, those tri-fold folders are there. It's a real nice way for these organizations to make money with no effort. The effort, my sister Jody White's the president of the Alumni Foundation. Christina Gyo is the vice president. My daughter Cara is the secretary. Zach Stomling is the treasurer. Caitlin Group, Vicky Group, and Joe Pizar and myself. I have to give a lot of credit to these folks for this fundraiser. I mean, Zach Stomling, the treasurer, and the rest of the group made, made the spreadsheets, did all the computer. I'm terrible with that. But those people do a great job. We want the Alumni Foundation to grow and we want to sell some bricks. And this brick sale can go on for years. And it's, it's a nice boost to those organizations. I hope I didn't leave anything out.
Link on the website.
What's that?
Link on the website.
Yeah, the link on the tri-fold folder and it's also on that poster up there.
Can't be going to the website often.
Yeah, yeah.
On the community, yeah, what we were just talking about.
We're hoping that it do self-perpetuate itself. When some of these organizations, like football or wrestling, get a check for two hundred dollars from the Alumni Foundation Brick Sale, they're going to say, oh, that would be easy. Let's buy some more bricks. And people start buying bricks, Ag Department, and some of these other ones. And you don't have to be a graduate. I'm, this was the first brick I'm ordering. I'm going to get one in memory of my parents. Honor and敬爱group, longtime fans. And designate it probably to wrestling, maybe tennis. My dad coached wrestling, Eric coached football. But yeah, it's, it's a great thing and it's starting to pick up momentum. But if you guys order a brick, it would speed things up a little more. Any questions?
How many years have you been coming to our football games, Mr. Group, without missing, missing a game? Last assist got hurt.
Well, I've missed two since nineteen eighty, well, seventy-eight.
Missed two. Pretty impressive.
Yeah. And I've been to a lot of wrestling matches and basketball games and, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely a McGuffey through and through.
Right.
You think there's only eighty-six dollars per brick?
It's eighty-six dollars for a brick.
And if twenty-five goes to the-
Yes.
There were positions.
It's eighty-six if you buy a brick with an insignia here, you see a soccer player, football player. You get the Ag insignia, you can get any of the military branches put on there. You just get the brick that sits on here, it's eighty dollars. It costs sixty if you just put on. The remainder of the funding, the bricks cost twenty-six dollars to make. Twenty-five goes to the organization. The rest goes to the Alumni Foundation. And we're going to hopefully hand it out in scholarships and stuff like that. So it's, it's, it's a really good fundraiser. It's a permanent fixture down wherever we put it. When we fill that area up there, it'll take fourteen hundred bricks. And that area is filled, we're going to start taking sidewalks up. A piece of sidewalk needs repaired, you pop it out and put bricks in it. So hopefully, it lasts for a long time. And Polar Engraving has been great. They're out of Florida. Anything else?
So basically, Mr. Group, you're getting fifty-four dollars a brick coming back to the alumni and the school, right?
Which they then plan to give back for scholarships and other opportunities. That is so great. Thank you so much. That's amazing.
And back to the Alumni Foundation, the blue paper I passed out. We'd like to list the members. There's a Facebook page on there. You can keep up to date with what people are doing. If you, if they turn their information in, they're a coal miner in West Virginia, you find out they're a coal miner in West Virginia. But it, we're trying to get the database built up to that point.
That's good and very nice.
And again, you don't have to be an alumni to join. I'm glad of that. Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Group.
Thank you.
As a side note, we are in our third year of our curriculum refresh cycle. First two years were spent in math and ELA. And this year, we find ourselves focused on science. In collaboration with our middle school and high school science teachers, our administration team at the middle school and high school, and also driven by the fact that there are new PA standards, steel standards, which stands for science, technology, engineering, environmental literacy, and sustainability. We've also been looking at the progression that would be needed under the steel standards for the high school. Tonight to update us on that work and also some of the changes we're going to ask the board to approve in the student handbook is high school principal, Mr. Mark Donnis. Mark?
Two things here. I left a packet up there at everybody's, everybody's seat. We did a lot of handbook changes last month, but as you know, this is our year that we're doing science curriculum changes. Like we're redoing science. And we've done ELA, we've done math over the last two years. Science is, is, out of all those three content areas, science is the one that has dramatically changed more than other. It took forever for the Pennsylvania State School Board to approve the science standards. There was a tremendous amount of discussion and impasse between the State Board of Education and the Department of Education and science, the Association of Science Teachers. Like there was, they, they spent years trying to get some consensus. So the, what, the final outcome of that were the steel standards, okay? So I have a, I have a copy of, of sort of what that, what those are here. I just, it's, it's on your agenda item there, the big forty-seven pages. But I just printed out a couple copies of it to illustrate what we want to do. So working with science and Dr. Oberg and Dr. Gottren and Mr. Crabbles, chairman of the Science Department, and all of our science teachers upstairs. We just felt that the new steel standards were requiring such a dramatic shift, and I'll talk about how they're shifting, that we needed to sort of change our expectations to make sure all we, we covered all the standards with our students. We think the course structure that we have in place, including the new environmental science course that I brought to you last month, it covers a lot of them, but it doesn't hit the, the technology and engineering standards. So the steel standard stands for obviously science, technology, engineering, environmental, literacy, and sustainability. Before, we were trying to incorporate technology and engineering into the existing science courses. Bio, chem, physics, physical science, forensic science. Just trying to incorporate those principles into it. One thing that has changed is that now technology and engineering is its own component. It needs to be explored at the same depth of like biology or chemistry. And it's, with our existing course structure, we just didn't feel that we were addressing them with enough depth to give our students all those full experiences that they needed to have in this particular content area. These new standards are designed basically about inquiry-based practices. Getting rid of memorization. Getting students involved in, in authentic inquiry, reinforcing problem-solving and critical thinking skills at a depth and, and providing these authentic exploration experiences. So that's sort of what they're looking at. They're looking at doing science as an inquiry-based field now. And we can feel that in our current course structure, we can do that in biology. Because we have, remember biology, you meet five days a week, then the other three days a week, it's on a six-day cycle, so you get a lab. So you have a chance to learn science and then do science. And we do that well in chemistry. And we do that well in biology. But the physical aspects of engineering and technology, we don't feel it's getting enough just through our own physics course. So working through them, we did some shifts in terms of the prerequisites for some of our AP classes. But they felt that we need to make sure that we hit all three. If you look on the last page, I guess it's probably the best way to illustrate it. The last page of this document, such a document here, this last row, the one where it says, technology and engineering, this is going to be now, like I said, a standalone component. Not just trying to incorporate it into the other ones, but actually have it standalone. So that's where, really where our course design is going to be heading to. So in order to make sure that, in a nutshell, in order to make sure that all of our students have this content area also. Not just the bio, not just the chem, not just the environmental, but the, the technology and engineering science. We would like to keep the same number of credit requirements that we have in place. This is just a handbook change. This is page seven of the handbook. Keep the skill four credits of science like we had before. Three credits for Western Area or Penn Commercial students. That, that number doesn't change. But we want to make sure that students don't only take biology, but now they have to take either physics or physical science. And that's where we will hit those technology and engineering standards exclusively. And that way, we will be able to hit all the current science standards for all of our current students. The other one, it just doesn't, it sort of glanced, the other course structure only glanced on them and didn't provide the opportunity. And that's really the dramatic shift in, in science right now. Like inquiry-based, technology and engineering are now ingrained in that. It's not like in a, that you would learn that in like, our, our engineering technology department. Not every kid takes that. Where they get to run the CNC router or do project-based learning or, or learn about those principles. We're talking about learning specific contents and theoretical concepts behind that specific engineering and technology. And the goal of these is to create, to provide students the opportunity and to create students with the opportunity to create, utilize, and assess emerging trends in technology. That's really the skill set that they're trying to build. So it's totally new. Before, science was like basically life science or chemistry and it, or environmental and forensics. It went branch off, but this is now a chunk that they're adding in here. And that's part of the reason it took so long. It's trying to basically build twenty, you know, twenty-first century skills within the current high school science curriculum. And making sure that every student gets it by changing these, this, just the part of the red there to physics or physical science will ensure that all of our students get all the standards.
So four, so four credits, but three of them have to be biol- or all four of them would be in biology, physics, or physical science.
So they have to take biology and they have to take physics or physical science, either one. Because it's really like for some students who attend Western Area, they don't have time to take the physics class because they have the lab and they can't, they just can't fit in their schedule because of the time that they're away. The course sequence, sort of the track sequence that's in there is at the bottom. So students will take biology, chemistry, and then they'll go into physics and then go in if they want to double up their junior year and then their senior year, if they can go into any of those branches they want. If a student in the other track, they had physical science this year. So that's coming out for a year. We're going to revamp that course and bring it back to you next year to put in for juniors. And that will catch all of our students. So it's sort of a transition year for that. But it's what we need to do to make sure that all of our students are getting all the Pennsylvania standards. And in the Science Department, it was very serious about this. We feel that this was our mission to do this and it was teacher-led. And, you know, I just, I, I thought it was the right. We need to make sure there's applications to technology and engineering in just every field that you're going to go into. So that, that's where they thought they would be the most, best way to attack it. I don't know, Dan, if you had any question, or I know you've been involved in this.
I was just asked, the Science Department is pretty engaged, pretty excited about the work they've been doing. They've been happy to have the chance to really get under the belt more there.
They're rebuilding their courses for next year. And those will come back to you as first and second reads for all of our existing science courses. So it's a lot. Questions? Yes.
You call it inquiry-based.
Inquiry-based.
So it's like you inquire specific questions. So if this is now inquiry-based, what was it before?
I think it was always wa- it always was in principle when, when you do a lab, you could say that's inquiry-based. But now they're saying that this is more of a priority. Less memorization, less, I, I guess the word is less conceptual, more doing, more inquiry-based. Shift, just a total shift. And I think we've always been good about that. We've always been, one thing, I mean, we spend a lot of money on science. Like science is my, like probably next to the Ag, it's my biggest chunk in the high school budget. Because we do science. And like, I mean, you're not learning about science, you're actually taking and applying those in a lab type of experiment or experiments that are done in a hallway. But I think science has always been inquiry-based because we do have the lab structure. But I think it's just sort of formalizing that as one of the goals of the state thing. Because not every school, like I know schools that have biology, they don't have labs.
Yeah, I was just going to say. I remember a lot of schools that went with virtual labs.
Yeah.
Even, and when it became more like, I hate to use this term because knowledge-based, because you're always using knowledge. But it was more about like being able to list certain criteria or certain aspects of things and being able to, like rote memorization. Like, we feed it to you, you regurgitate it back to us. This is more application-based. This is more handled.
I was just going to say, I think from, from looking at this, the science teachers, one of the biggest things they're seeing is from the instructional design piece of it. The way that was taught before, it may have been more book, book learning. Not to say that inquiry-based wasn't there, but now there's an emphasis, a heavy emphasis on- on the way in which it's actually taught.
Yeah, yeah, to, uh, Mr. Thomas, to prove your point, like I, like I said, I know schools, there are several schools around here, there are high schools that they'll have a biology, but they have no lab, or a chemistry and they have no lab. And, you know, at that point, you know, setting up a lab and doing an experiment and providing those resources and those experiences and having a lab report and forming a hypothesis and then pulling the data and then choosing your data and see if your hypothesis, I mean, that's doing science. And I think we've always done, done, and that's why it costs so much over there, they spend like thirty thousand dollars a year, literally, on consumables. And it's because our kids and our course design structure does science. And, um, not all schools do, so for us, it's less of a shift than others.
Maybe the example would be instead of, I can remember when I was a, a student in high school, we had to memorize Kingdom Phylum class, remember that?
Yeah.
And it was literally memorization. On the test, it was being able to list them out. More as opposed to now they're going to give you something and you're going to use a, a key to determine, you know, to, to figure out which Kingdom Phylum class, whatever that, that we're going to, we're going to.
Or here's a periodic table and balance these equations. That's all good, right? Learning how to do it, certainly, I mean, I'm not a science person, but memorizing the periodic table, I think we've all been there. I understand the noble gases appear in the corner and, and all these other things, and then balancing the equation, uh, the, the scientific equations, um, okay, that's another skill set, but we're, you know, the inquiry basis, it has to be more than that, it has to be more meaningful. So if you're adding these two things together and you're getting this reaction on a formula with a set of abbreviations and numbers, now you're actually doing it in practice, physically in the classroom. And I, and I, like I said, I think we've always been good at it, but it's just formalizing it because across the state, it doesn't all look like that.
Right. I think we've always been ahead of the curve. I don't think this would be the start of how each one of the will be another.
No, no, I don't think so.
Well, he's just missing it.
Yeah, scientific property, scientific.
Just missing the process, yeah. But that's all the steps.
Yeah, that's, that's like baked into it, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's sort of back to bacon.
Actually, with, with part of this curriculum change, we're actually increasing that and pushing that down farther into the middle school. That, that lab and scientific inquiry process, because it is a process, it's a thinking process, it's a, a data analysis process, it's a conclusion-based process. You know, kids write pretty complicated lab reports in, in, at McGuffey High School now. We buy specific lab books so they learn how to do that, and then those skills transfer. We send a lot of kids to, uh, to pharmacy, we send a lot of kids to, um, a, a lot of the health fields, and it's just, it's just been very beneficial.
Um, I just want to say, I'm ecstatic about it, having taught many of those classes on that list and forensics for the last seven years, which is not offered at every single high school. I think it's just going to be awesome.
Yeah, and we offer organic chemistry, which is rare to find in schools, um, that are bigger than us. And that is such a huge part for our kids going into farm and going into nursing. I mean, I, I get emails from them back saying, you know, Mr. Noel really put me through them with paces, but I'm glad I had him because like my, some of these other kids on my class are struggling and I feel pretty good. And it's not every time you get an email back from a class, from a student in college about a class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Thomas. Again, thank you to the administrative team with middle school, high school administrators, and also to our middle school and science teachers we meet every Tuesday, um, and they've gotten a lot of work done in that amount of time, so thank you to that group as well. All right, next, uh, Dr. Gotchran and I are continuing the series on Futurity Comprehensive Plan. Tonight, I assume this is part one.
I thought you said part one? Like a mini-series?
Um, so tonight, we're looking at the ways in which we have a vision for culture and high expectations at McGuffey, primarily around tonight and the next session will be in March on our data, on student assessments and student achievements. Uh, the reason why we say part one tonight is because if we were to go over our testing from three through eight and, and also grade the, uh, nine, ten, eleven for keystones, we would be here for probably the next hour and a half. So we'll be very concise tonight with this information. If you have questions, if there's something right away that you want to ask, please do, but if you can hold it to the end, it's even better. I also realized tonight that, um, there's a lot of slides here, so I'm going to make sure tomorrow in my Friday email to the board that you have this PowerPoint slide for you. All right, Dr. Gotchran? Okay. So two years ago, just very quickly, um, every school in the Commonwealth, all five parent schools have to create a comprehensive plan. In a comprehensive plan, one of the areas that you look at are challenges thanks to your school. Once you've identified those challenges, then you want to look at goals in which you can, uh, address those challenges. Last time in January, we talked about attendance and the issue of attendance and chronic attendance and tourism across the Commonwealth, not just nationally, but also here. Today, again, we're going to be focusing on a foster vision and culture of high expectations. There was a slide right after this that I'm going to hold off on, I think we, we moved it out of there, but it basically showed that there's a three-year plan for addressing each of these, and we'll share that through the end. Okay. This also bears repeating because I think this is an area that in the past, we kind of hung up on, the building score. Actually, a building score is made up of three different areas, and not all of them are academic. The first one, as we shared with you last time, was actually attendance. When it comes to our high school attendance, there are two different numbers they get, both for their overall attendance at the high school level, nine through twelve, but also for their graduation rates, which are calculated a year behind. For our middle school and elementary, they actually get a total of twenty points, all for attendance. Today, we're going to break down the other two areas in which your buildings are scored on. There is the academic achievement side of things for ELA, math and science, and then there's what's called academic growth, which is PVAS, or the value adds that our school provides. I'm going to take the academic achievement, Dr. Gotchran is going to take the academic growth, and we're going to split up here from there. Next slide. So we did leave it in there. Okay. So I want to share something with you. When we created this, again, two years ago, uh, with teachers, administrators, we had community members, board members that are part of this, we looked at this and said, okay, let's create something that's going to address this, but never having something that was measurable, meaning come year two, how do we know that we accomplished what we said we were going to accomplish in year one, and so on and so forth. I wanted to share this with you because what we've done now with all four priority challenges is from a year-to-year basis, we're updating our next year's targets. So at the very end, when Dr. Gotchran gets that slide, he'll show you some of this. Kind of take in the wordiness here for just a second and recognize as you look at, at those, it says we analyze the available student achievement data in the assessment data. Well, we have to, it's the first year, taking baby steps, going within our buildings, talking to our administrators, administrators, talking to your teachers about the data. Over COVID, during the pandemic, something we kind of pulled away from wasn't doing as much as, as we were. And extended year, we said we're going to implement robust curriculum offerings, which is in fact what we've been doing for the last three years, curriculum cycle, start with math, ELA, this year, science. But again, what I said to you before matters, but how are we knowing that this strategy, these goals that were set before us are actually improving our student achievement? So at the very end, we'll show you how we changed from this very wordiness, very vague, not goal-oriented or center, something like that. Dr. Gotchran? All right. So to get there, we first have to talk about some changes. Raise your hand, who members, no child left behind. Okay? Most of us? What was the goal by 2014? What was the goal of when it started in 2002 to 2014? What was the goal that we had from the federal level when it came to, this is the provided initiative? What was the goal by 2014? A hundred percent, a hundred percent of our students, not just in third grade, not just in fourth grade, but all the students who took their PSSAs, would be proficient. So you have basic and below basic, you have proficient and advanced. The goal was when it started, that all of our students by 2014, 2015 school year would be a hundred percent. Do you think any school made, made that in the Commonwealth?
No.
Absolutely not. This has then changed to 2015 with ESSA, every student succeeds ACT, and here's the measures, these are the interim, interim progress measures that we've had since that point, since 2018. Now, I have to point out something on this. You will notice that there is the PSSA average, as the average score that students in the Commonwealth to this point, as of 2023, have scored in ELA, math and science. You'll notice what a critical, critical part of that is, that only once, if you look at all three of those measures, when it comes to the interim progress the state expects of all of our schools, only once, as an average across the state, do we actually meet those targets. Here's number two. Because what happened in 2020, with the pandemic, they also pushed out the interim progress target by three years, the initial was 2030, now 2033. Third thing, and I'm expecting by 2033, a hundred percent of your students are proficient and advanced. You'll notice again, when it comes to ELA, eighty-one percent, math, seventy-one, point eight percent, and then with science, eighty-three percent. So keep this in mind, because we're going to be sharing where we are comparatively. Again, PSSAs, three, three through eight, only tonight. Next time we come back in March, we'll share with our keystones at that point.
The only thing I was going to add to that is, if you're wondering about the baseline percentage, that was just the average, eight averages from 2016 and 17, kind of composite. So that's where they started their baseline, was looking at the, the averages from prior years, and then they increased it from, from that baseline. Just like we were wondering about that.
One last item, and that's something, no, no, next slide. This is important too. The reason why we have this in here, because in the moment, you're going to see a graph that shows all of our students across time. Because it's important for us to understand our history as a district, know where we've been, know where we are currently, know where we're going. You're going to notice a dramatic, a very dramatic point in time. This is where it happened. So up until this time, we were following the key, having those standards up until 2013. And many of you know this idea of common core that came about. In the case of Pennsylvania, we adopted, it became PA core. That actually happened in 2014, 2015 school year, where schools to this point have been teaching a standard curriculum, there's aligned to the, the past, and then they had to figure out how to make what they were teaching align to the common core. In that year, 2014 to 2015, just keep that back of your mind, it impacted scores statewide in a negative fashion. Okay? So that was the year it was introduced, 2013 was adopted, 2014, 2015 was the first championship phase that it reflected the new PA standards. Any questions about that? Okay. So first slide?
All right.
I'm going to let you absorb it just for a second. And again, I will, I'll provide this to you tomorrow, but I think you probably can tell the 2014, 2015 school year. It's right here. What this is representing is our students across the body of time on the PSSAs, from the time that we were under the old PA standards to now the PA core, the common core. And in 2015, you will notice a dramatic impact from the way it changed. For the most part, when you look at this, you take away that ELA, you're reading, our students from the proficient level have maintained a relatively steady pace. In fact, that year, they increased. Remember, data can tell lost scores. I can make this data look completely beautiful and pretty and, and snowy, but here's what happened. We increased the proficiency where we decreased. And then, those advanced students that we had here at one time, actually were at the same point the year before, decreased. Those students went from advanced, it's the next bucket proficient, and that's why the proficient numbers went up. Again, I could not show that to you, but that's important because that's what happened, and that continues to be the case from 2015 on. We have not raised our students. Our advanced level students have been remaining the same in that area, as well as our proficiency. This is the negative part. Look at our, our basic students, just below proficient for basic students. They rose, and they continue to be fine over the years. Something that we're addressing, and I think, I think in fact, if I can pull out a positive nugget here, if you look at our scores from 2020, 2021, 2021, 2022, 2022, 2023, you'll notice what happened. Those students start to decrease, remember, our basic students start to decrease, and for the first time in a while, our students in dance actually are now increasing. Tiny work to do, no doubt about that. Again, I, I'm not saying that we've arrived or that things are great, but I think in part, this is because the focus that we've now had from our curriculum development, from the way we assess, discussions that we have on a daily basis from our principals on down to teachers, this is having impact ever so slowly, but we are having an impact. Next slide. This is going to be a little more dramatic, next slide, this is math. Again, if you call back to the slide on the interim progress reports for the state, this is the area where Pennsylvania students have the hardest time. Again, you can see what happened in 2014, 2015. We were doing pretty well, we had fifty percent, and then those are advanced proficient and our proficient starts by now. And at the same time holds true, those students go somewhere and they went to two buckets that we have to dial, and that is the number of basic students, the yellow, and unfortunately, the low basic students continue to spike. We actually lost ground with our students. And that's something that Dan's going to talk, Dr. Gotchran's going to talk about, is when you have a student that's basically below basic, what are you doing on a daily basis across the years to move them? You may never move them from below basic into advanced, but are we moving them into basic and then proficient, and that's the concern we have. Again, positive indicator, the last three years, the numbers of students we had in proficient have increased, the numbers of students in below basic the last three years have decreased, we flatlined with basic and we're ever so slightly increasing in advancement. Work can be done, certainly. Certainly. I think we're starting to see some of the benefits of the things we've been doing there. Last slide, science. This represents only two grade levels. So in Pennsylvania, science is for fourth and eighth grade. When the steel standards come into play in the year 2025, that spring, it will now go from fourth graders and eighth graders to fifth graders and eighth graders. The year prior to that, there'll be a pilot that won't count from that, they'll, they'll be, they'll be able to figure out how that source will look. We've done decently well here, um, not a whole lot that I, I would kind of share, but other than this, as Mark said before, notice, in 2014, 2015, anything happen? Do you know why? As Mr. Thomas was just saying, we could not, as the state comes to an understanding of where our standards should be for science. So up to this point, we've been using the old P S, uh, science standards, right? So that's why you're not seeing this rate, the CAS, or the rate shift in proficient advanced and below basic and basic happening that way. Okay? Um, again, this is great, four through eight, uh, for PSSAs.
And then, Dr. Ober, please, I just want to point out again, in the last couple years, you're seeing a decrease in the number of below basic, a decrease in the number of basic, an increase in the number of, um, advanced, and even a little slight increase in the number of proficient.
Well, what I'm here to tell you also, and to point that out, what I'm also here to tell you is, as a school district, for ELA, math and science, we are still far behind our peers. I mean, I'm going to own that, that's absolutely true. We're still far behind where we need to be, so we have some aggressive targets that we'll share with you at the end, that we have four abilities. Because we can't, you know, just doing enough is not doing enough, and even seeing that makes me feel good that we are making some progress, but we have a lot, lots of room for improvement here. So I just want to kind of share that out there. Okay? Dr. Gotchran?
All right.
Dr. Gotchran is going to share the growth side of achievement.
He gave me the easy part of it, right? Explaining the statistics behind, um, probability and growth, and so I did take statistics. Um, I, I do enjoy statistics. I don't know if I quite grasp all of the advanced metrics that go into some of this, but I'm going to, going to do my best to kind of walk through what, what we're talking about. And, um, so I think what most people are familiar with is the color system that seems to be universal, right? Red is not good, green, okay, blue, really good, um, right? That's kind of ingrained in us in terms of a, a mindset standpoint. And so when we talk about student growth, um, the, the best way I could explain what we're dealing with there is after kids first have a data point, um, assessment-wise, so whether that, usually that's the third grade PSSA. There is other data that can go into those calculations, um, if schools issue the CDT exams, um, which are like benchmark exams, those also pull into, to that data. There are other standard assessments that can be submitted and used for those predictions, but primarily when we're talking about what, what is the baseline data that a student is growing from, we're talking we're talking about the annual PSSA measure. And so for third grade students, there isn't a growth measure, because that's the first year that they're assessed with a PSSA. But for each year after third grade, there is a growth calculation that is put out through the PVOS, which is Pennsylvania Value Added System. And basically, what it does with each student and then each cohort of students in each group, is it looks at how they performed in all of their previous assessments. So if it's a fourth grader, you're just looking at how they performed in third grade. If it's an eighth grader, you're looking at how they performed cumulatively from grades three through seven, and even across content areas. So like you're, because you might think, well, how does a fourth grader in science get a growth measure? They actually look at their third grade math and ELA performance and form a projection of where they think a child will be next, based on that past performance. Um, obviously, if you're dealing with statistics, you're dealing with projections. I don't want to stand here and defend this as an absolute, or as the only metric that matters. Um, but it is, as Dr. Over shared with the building score, this is forty percent of that calculation is how did we do from a growth standpoint? Other thing I want to point out for growth is, growth is independent of academic performance from a proficiency standpoint. So a child could be advanced or distinguished in third grade, still be advanced or distinguished in fourth grade, and have terrible growth numbers, or have green growth numbers, right? Uh, and actually, a high performing student, it's gonna be even harder to hit that growth target potentially, because if you're already performing at a very high level, it's not actually a bad thing to maintain. Um, also, a child could perform below basic, and then perform below basic again, but have a decent growth score, because you're talking about how did they perform versus how they were projected to perform. Um, in addition to colors, um, and you can see, you know, the red, and there's a, if you see a little ellipses at the end, either on the red or the blue, that's kind of indicating the growth indicator was even beyond the scope of the normal graph, kind of a significant outlier, positive or negative. Um, and there are also growth numbers that go along with that as well. So like a growth index number of zero would be kind of right around where that dotted line is, right? A child performed pretty much like how we thought they would based on their previous year's performance. The more positive that growth index number, the further into the blue you're gonna get, the more they exceeded expected performance based on previous scores. And then same thing, if you see a negative growth index number, the further they regress compared to what was expected. Um, of course, there's lots that goes into this, right? Um, a child could be having a particularly good year, they could be having all things clicking on good cylinders, they could have a particular teacher that they click with, um, a child could be going through something in their life outside of school that affects focus, affects performance. Um, but, and you know, in general, we look at how are our kids doing? Are they, are we improving them each year based on where they performed the previous year? Are they growing? You know, if they were, if they were below basic, are we moving them forward? If they were distinguished, are we still challenging them and pushing them? And so if you want to go to the next one? So, um, for the purpose of today, we wanted to look at kind of the two most recent data points as far as our student growth, and where we are at each grade level, in each content area for a two-year window. And so what we do, and you can see, growth, growth numbers right now are kind of different places on the map, kind of scattered, um, just like Dr. Over said with the performance data, right? We could have, I could have had arrows pointing to seventh and eighth grade in ELA and being like, you know, look at that for that year, that's really a good number, and it is. We're, you know, very happy and excited to celebrate those guys. But I also never want us to get too high on a positive number, because we got to keep working, right? We want to keep that growth looking positive. And we also want to look at and analyze some of the areas where our growth wasn't as strong, or those couple of grade levels, right, where the growth was well below, and talk about what are we doing, what can we be doing to help move that in a positive direction, right? We don't, uh, you know, we don't want to be too unrealistic and say, we're gonna go from well below to the dark blue in one year, right? But are we seeing positive changes, or if we see a decline, what changed, what happened, what can we do to reverse that decline? Um, I will linger all day and advocate for our teachers and their abilities and their strengths. And sometimes, I would say, data and being able to use data effectively is a lot about trust. And having administrators and teachers be able to trust each other to say, hey, like, this is a tool to help us improve. If it's a weapon to, if it's a weapon to say, you know, oh, teachers, what are you doing in this grade level, right? Then we've lost our teachers, we've lost the ability to work with them to improve. Whereas if we say, hey, like, let's look at, like, what did we try with our kids last year? What was positive, what do we need to change? And if, you know, if we take that collaborative approach, which is what we're really trying to do, then the data becomes something we can use to move forward, as opposed to something that people look at and, you know, deflect and try to deny ownership of. And so I, you know, I believe this team here, right? Collectively, we all, we all own both the good growth numbers and the growth numbers that we need to work on. And so that's our ELA growth, and we'll look at math there next. Um, and again, you can see similar to the ELA slide, that our math growth the last two years has been a mixed bag. We've seen some areas where kids have grown and incredibly grown. And I, you know, again, we don't want to get too high on positive numbers, but I do, I do need to recognize specifically seventh and eighth. And when you see that ellipse at the end, um, again, that means that there are positive things growth-wise happening in those places that exceed even the end of the, you know, the high end of the growth spectrum. And so, you know, I do want to recognize the work they've put in there. Um, and in the same token, you can see a couple of areas where we're on the opposite extreme, and that we want to really work with those groups and those grade levels to get some consistent practices in place, uh, maybe learn from some peers of what are some strategies, what are some things that are working? Um, one of the areas why we think that especially seventh and eighth have seen a lot of success is some of the personalized learning stuff that they have been able to do with the Alex program. And so we actually have worked, um, earlier this year, we had enough licenses available that we pushed Alex down into grades four and five. Um, and we actually are starting to review, uh, it's called Alex Adventure, which is the, uh, it's being newly rolled out, and it's kind of the pre-third grade and below, um, version of Alex, because Alex only starts with third grade from a program standpoint. So again, it's not just a personalized learning program that will make us improve our growth, but we definitely want to consider all factors, yes.
I'm just gonna ask for clarification, maybe, so that everybody can understand. The placement, I mean, I know it's easy to look like in a circle in the, in the red, and say, oh, they're both in the red, for twenty twenty-two and for twenty-three. Where they are in the red actually makes a difference as well. For example, if you're looking at sixth grade, you'll see the circle is really back towards the back end, right? With the extra, and then in sixth grade for twenty twenty-three, you'll see the circle is more in the middle of that red area. And so that actually specifically tells you something as well.
Yeah, excellent point. And that's where you have, thank you for spotlighting that, you have both the color indicator and also the numerical indicator. And so your sixth grade, if we had the numerical indicator displayed, your, it would still be a negative number, but it would be a smaller negative number in twenty-three than twenty-two. And you lose the, you also lose the dreaded red ellipse on the left side. So that's, you know, that's definitely a good.
And not to say that, you know, we're, you want to have self-charge work to do, but you also have to look at growth where it is as well.
Yeah, yeah. So the goal is to continue to move, uh, those as much as we can in that positive direction. And if that means that sixth grade moves up into the yellow, right, that is progress, right? We want to take sustainable progress. Um, we don't want to, you know, it doesn't do anybody any good if we jump it all the way up and then it drops all the way back down. We want to build the foundation as strong as we can, so. All right, and we've got one more of these for science, Dr. Over.
I was gonna buy you one of those here for a minute.
Oh, go ahead. What have you got?
Well, the other thing you can do, again, just looking at that scoreboard over time, so you'll see in twenty twenty-two, the scoreboard actually is well below, that's what the part about means. But if you follow that, you can do also, and you follow them into twenty twenty-three, now those are sixth graders and seventh graders.
Right.
And you can look at curriculum, I would suggest also look at the instruction that's happening in the classroom, how it's being taught, that's the same group.
Right.
See that here? So there is things happening, as we, we look at it both from a year-over-year basis, which our expectations do, but I also got it as snowboards moving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, go for it. All right. Um, and then lastly, you just, you see the, um, the science growth numbers for grades four and eight. Again, those would be only two, uh, assessed years for science for PSSA, and then Keystone Biology in ninth grade. Um, and so you can see again, from twenty-two to twenty-three, we saw some positive movement as far as both the fourth and eighth grade growth indicators. Um, but still, especially would love to see that eighth grade group continue to move forward. And listen, I, I want to see us always move forward. So even if everything was on that right side in the blue, um, we still, we still want to be looking at, how can we take those next steps? How can we maintain, how can we keep progressing, so we can jump ahead there? Um, so a couple of times it was said during this, there's still a lot to be done, right? There's a lot of work ahead of us. Um, there's some positive indicators, there's some indicators that are not as positive. And so, um, what I wanted to kind of wrap up here with tonight is just some of the things we've done or have put in place, um, that we plan to continue, that have been positive, um, you know, positive movement, or we've seen some returns from. Um, and so, uh, not necessarily a particular order or an exhaustive order, but some of the things we feel like have helped, um, getting the six-year review and refresh cycle, um, and kind of really being diligent in monitoring that, and moving from, uh, you know, an intensive focus on math, then to ELA, then to science this year, but never forgetting about math and ELA, right? Like tomorrow morning, um, while certain groups are doing the senior project presentations, um, six twelve science will be meeting together, but then, uh, K to five ELA will be meeting for the first ninety minutes of the day, then K to five math will be meeting for the next ninety minutes of the day, with that idea being that you're never just out of cycle, out of sight, out of mind. And so having that review cycle, having everyone kind of understand where they are in that process, we think has been a positive. Um, of course, a number of you all were a part of the process of the past two years of updating both our math and our ELA resources. And so we're very appreciative of that, and think that that has made a difference. And I've heard some positive feedback from teachers in terms of just those resources. Again, the resources aren't the entire solution, but it's certainly nice to have current resources, to have current materials. Um, last spring, we did, we completed the K to twelve math curriculum document that laid out kind of scope and sequence and standards for those grade levels. Um, our professional development, and this actually started, we were, back forty-eight team was reminiscing exactly two years ago. Um, we met in this room in April of twenty twenty-two, and we started to hash out, what should our primary professional development focuses be? And we kind of hammered out, uh, six main professional development pathway areas, including curriculum development, instructional practices, technology integration was another one. Um, basically, that idea of having professional development that was focused on where we wanted to go. Um, and you might have heard a little bit about language and instructional routines. You might have played along, played school a few times. We've, you know, we feel that that type of instructional practice has been positive in terms of student, um, you know, student progress. We've started to really form teacher teams, uh, most notably math and ELA. Um, science six twelve has formed. We're gonna fuse some more K to five teachers into science moving ahead. We just felt like they, if we asked them to take on a third core subject this year, um, that we might have had, you know, people running out of the building, we might have, you know, we might have had some teachers in crisis, um, justifiably so. But so we've, um, really been working with those teams, and I try to really, and the principals do, and Dr. Over does as well, we try to take really seriously the feedback they have, the ownership that they take of the progress. Um, we've started with our kindergarten teachers, a program called ECRI. This, uh, they trained in December, just before Christmas, and it stands for enhanced core reading instruction. And it is, um, a very, it fits with everything with the science of reading and with structured literacy as far as direct and explicit instruction. And it's, um, it's actually a series of routines that teaches kids explicitly how to sound out the words, how to connect the sounds together. Um, and so right now, that is in place just with our kindergarten classrooms. First grade will look to implement that, uh, beginning in the fall, and then we will ultimately roll it all the way up to second grade, with the idea being that after those primary grade levels, they will hit third grade with a really solid foundation of that, um, kind of structured approach, explicit approach to reading. Uh, we talked about Alex, but having, um, personalized learning options available in both math and ELA. ELA is the, or Wago is the K to eight ELA personalized learning solution that we currently have put in place this year. Um, the two Sunday programs, that is basically just a step towards improving our intervention model, specifically for ELA. Um, and both of those represent, um, students who need help with decoding skills. And so those are both, um, in place, beginning with this year, we did some training this past fall. Um, and we have been fortunate to work with Patents. Um, you can go ahead and click on it. Um, we have a three-year support partnership with them starting this year, um, that includes funding. And we had, we did one funding, uh, agreement in the fall that got us about twenty-seven thousand. Um, we'll be submitting another one this spring that will hopefully get us another, uh, maybe similar amount to that. Um, but more, as important, and this may be not more important than the funding, um, we have personnel support. We have coaches from Patents that come in, they're actually in the district today, working at both elementaries. Um, they're gonna continue to work with us for two additional school years after this one. Um, I don't know what to say on that first one, thank you guys.
I expect to tell you, we all know this, uh, from working with Dr. Dr. on this side, and you hearing him on that side, he has been the absolute integral piece to everything that you've seen so far, what we're talking about. Uh, the creation of position that was about three and a half years ago now, um, was absolutely catalyst to where we are, or will be to. I should take that one.
No, that's fine, I, you know, I just appreciate the chance that I've had to do what I've been able to do here, and so. Um, the next two, I can deflect to Mr. Wilson. Um, he and I have done some work together on tying everything together. Um, we've spent a number of different webinars and troubleshooting sessions, making sure that our data systems are correct and that they're functioning, and that they have the correct passwords, and that the correct people have access, uh, making sure that people who, you know, are the current administrators, the current principals in the different buildings, um, and also tying everything together through clever, um, so that our students, um, and those of you, you know, children in the district or family members in the district have probably seen this, they only have to log in at one place, and they're then able to access all of these different platforms, um, mostly headache-free through that one point of entry. And so credit to Mr. Wilson on the tech side, that those maybe don't seem directly related to making academic progress, but I can tell you it's a whole lot easier to study data when you have the correct access to the data platforms, and it's a whole lot easier for kids to use these great resources whenever they don't have to remember seven hundred passwords. We also, um, we've leveraged and leaned on other curriculum support from IU one, which has been very beneficial, um, working with the team there and attending monthly meetings and getting updates that they're able to get from the state, um, and from other IUs, and they've just been a big support. Um, there's more to do, there will always be more to do. Um, we are looking at, really, in both math and ELA especially, what we want to do for assessments, how we can improve our assessments, um, having a consistent district calendar. I mean, everybody knows PSSAs are in April, keystones are in May, right? Uh, AP exams are in May, but what about all the other types of things, right? The beginning of year benchmarks, the middle of year benchmarks. Um, wanting to not just have a list of when we give assessments, but what are the assessments we're giving? Why are we giving them? Are they necessary? We don't want to over-assess, um, so if we have, if we find that we have a lot of overlap, or that we have an assessment we're giving that we don't actually benefit from the data that it provides, uh, then maybe looking at dropping it or replacing it with something. then maybe looking at dropping it or replacing it with something different. We, one of the things our patent support is gonna work with us next on is elementary master schedules and setting up to see if could students have, within the same grade level, shared intervention time so that if two different, if first grade kids in two different homerooms have two different areas of either enrichment or or support need, that maybe the teachers could trade kids for that intervention block and say, hey, I'm gonna take all the kids that need help with decoding. I'm gonna take the kids that are, you know, really needing to work on building up that fluency, right? And so if they have a shared time in their schedule, we think that that will really allow us to do more and specialize a little bit more with those those children. Tiered supports, at the beginning of all these presentations, you always see the triangle continuing to develop out that idea of what's what do we need to provide for all children? What do we want to provide for some children that need a little bit of extra help? And then what do we need to provide at an individualized level for children who need the most extra support? And then lastly, the next step is, how can we use what the student's performance data tells us to help us make decisions about where, what they need, what program would be best for them? Do they need the Sunday program versus like a read one eighty? Or, you know, where where should they go to to get the next thing they need? And so lastly, lastly, we, as Dr. Ober shared, we updated our year-two targets. So this is year two of the three-year comprehensive plan cycle. And not to give any administrators, you know, extra stress, but I did notice that next spring, we'll be submitting for the next three-year cycle. So I think it was something like October of twenty twenty-five, the is the due date for it to refresh all over again for for three more years. But right now, we're in the heart of year two of the three-year future-ready process. And so this is some of the updated things we're we're hoping to aim for. Some are ambitious, some are, you know, I said, we could set a softball target that we crush over the fence, but what did we learn, you know, if we didn't challenge ourselves? And so we're gonna always be course correcting, always be recalibrating in terms of, did we meet these? How close did we come? How much did we exceed them by? I hope we're saying, how much did we exceed them by? That would make me smile. And so the the last two, I guess I would point to there, just since this whole session has been about academic performance, we're looking at each cohort group, so each group of students in PSSAs, right? Could we improve that provision plus advance, that proficiency percentage by five percent with each cohort? And then for the growth index, could we see that that number? So not necessarily the color, right? We're not looking at everyone moving one color to the next, but did we see that number move in a rightward direction? And then so some things, again, if we have a focus, if we have a a target, then it helps us to to streamline what to work towards. And that was kind of what we had this evening. And, Dr. Ober, you had any parting thoughts?
No, any questions?
Really questions? Just a couple of comments. One, I think sometimes it's easy to get caught up in the colors, right? You're seeing those like red is bad, you know? But you have to look at how it breaks down, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that. And the other thing to keep in mind is really slow and steady increases is good. You know, you're not really looking for these huge advancements in short amounts of time, but these small amounts of growth throughout. I think that's important. The other thing is just a personal thing for me. I'm sure many of you remember, I voted no on the director of curriculum position. And I told you at the time, it was not anything related to you, but I had people from the community who felt that we didn't need that position. And I just wanted to go on record as saying I was wrong. We have made more growth over the last few years because we have someone at the helm who is dedicated to actually looking at every minute piece of our curriculum and our resources and working with the teachers collaboratively and the upper administration as well to focus. We spent years not being able to focus because we didn't have anyone who was dedicated to that. So I just wanted to go on the record as saying that I was wrong. You have been doing an absolutely phenomenal job. That is my opinion. And I want to thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Ober, for the leadership and the foresight in really pushing for that position at a time when you knew that there was some opposition.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you, Coach. We're gonna, I'm gonna do an audible. Tonight, we're actually gonna be hiring a football coach, so I think it's appropriate. We actually have our middle school student of the month, who's been waiting. So with your approval, I'm actually ask Ms. Lee Augustine to come up here and present our middle school student of the month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Barth February student of the month is Justin Durkis. Justin is at McGuffey. He's a McGuffey's middle school student. The student of the month is nominated and voted on by the teachers. Justin shows consistent preparation, respect, involvement, dedication, and empathy at the middle school. We are proud of him and his attributes to McGuffey Middle School. Justin is currently an eighth-grade student. He is described by his teachers as a fantastic young man. Justin enjoys playing soccer and basketball. His best memory was on the soccer field this year with their revenge against Wayne'sburg. He shared with me, as well as I know, there is nothing like a big away win after a big home loss. He would like to give a shout-out to Mrs. Mc, who has the best sense of humor. His advice for his peers is to try hard at everything. In the future, he would like to be a wilder. Justin, it's your honor to have you at the middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine. We have two items left. Two items left. So since becoming the Claysville Elementary Principal, Mr. Matt Wolfe has made it one of his many priorities, many goals, to introduce a new electronic sign for in front of the building. After identifying the right vendor, and maybe just as importantly, securing a private donation to pay for the entire marquee itself, Mr. Wolfe is very close to making that goal a reality. Mr. Wolfe is here tonight to update the board on his progress and on his goal. So with that, Mr. Wolfe.
I wanted to talk to you about some projects that we are doing at Claysville. We have an excellent organization, the PEO. Thank you very much, Ms. Sigler. And so we are very blessed to have a great community at Claysville and at McGuffey, so as you all know. So one of the things that we are doing that we, one thing that I recognize is something that our sign, the, in the first thing, that is our current sign at Claysville. Current sign is, this is our display, and this is what we represent ourselves at Claysville. And being here for six years, I knew we better. So one of the things that I I saw, like, I spent two years at Joe Walker, and we had a marquee out there, but just a a way of just displaying. And it's just a, it's a small gesture, but I think it really means a lot. And I I I really believe that we need to have pride in buildings, and this is one of the things that we can instill pride. And so obviously, this is not going to be something that's going to be funded through the our school budget, and I recognize that, but that is not a barrier that we can just say that we we can be better. So working with some people within the community, we did secure a anonymous donation for the entire thing, and we were very blessed to have that. So I I I can't say enough good things about our community and enough good things about our parents at at Claysville Elementary. So I'm gonna go over a couple of things of what this looks like. And so we developed this plan. And so the the next slide or the next thing that you'll see, this is our, this is the current proposal of our sign. The it's, the the dimensions are four foot by by eight. And then, and that is the screen. So this is like an interactive computer screen. So we'll talk more about this. One of the things that we are doing is, this is an interactive screen, similar to what you see at the high school, but just a little bit more updated. Not as big, but we don't need to be as big down at Claysville. We just want something to present something, show the parents, and just announce some some highlights that we're doing in the school. On the top, you'll notice that I just wanted to provide something simple. This is where I I need your help when presenting this, and hopefully, this is, this gets approved. But this is the sign, and this is the 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 signature that we decided as a as a school and a community. And that's what we bring. I just wanted that, the blue and gold and the white, something simple, but not too overbearing. The the true message is the interactive board below it. So that's what, you can look at that. We can ask questions about that one later. But if you want to turn that or do it. So the next is the location of this sign. So the location, this is a a top view of of Claysville. Claysville is the building on the left. This is, this is kind of the point where it comes down. We decided to go here instead of the original because we couldn't be out by forty where the original sign is because we don't have an electrical hookup. So we need to have that electric connection. So we decided that this was the best possible way. When when cars come up, that they'll, that's the first thing they see. We do have to make some some adjustments in the in the in that area of there's some shrubbery and stuff that we have to rearrange or eliminate. But we think that this is a good spot for that. So that's where the location is. And so if you turn turn the page again. So here's the other thing that I wanted to present. So the, so what we are presenting is, I've learned a lot about LEDs and and what this what this means. And so I can't say enough good things about Mr. McKee has has helped me as well. So we are, we are, we are slighted to get a ten-millimeter, and that is your first one. So ten millimeters means that's the, between the LED lights, it's ten millimeters between them. The farther you go out, the obviously, the more pixels you can see. So the 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 bigger one, so the bigger, the farther the pixels away, that's where you want, like, they're high up on highways. This, we don't need a, they, was it six? They had six showing at the at the demo? So that's like a, it's like a TV, and we don't need a TV outside. We just need something to present. We felt like that they recommended a ten. We thought that was a a nice, a nice model. They rack like twenty-three feet back, and you can't see any pixels. So that was good. So you're not really up close, and that's something, we don't need to be high, high-tech. We just want to display some of the things and 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 be proud of of our of our school, which we already are. This just i- is another example. So I just wanted to at least show the example of what we're getting in that display. And so you want to hit that again? So the other thing in this, we had a demo earlier earlier this week. And so we were impressed with some of the things that they had to offer. And they had, they brought a truck and they displayed it. And so a few of us were there to to witness some of the things. And some of the things that they discussed, each panel of this, you can, if one breaks, you don't have to do the whole thing. They just take the panel out and then they replace that. There's a five-year guarantee on this. And so, but they also, and we're gonna talk more about this, they have a guarantee of parts for ten years. So it's one of those things. And that's usually the life of something, but at least for ten years, we have that. It's not like, oh, we don't make that anymore. That's a guarantee, and that's a good thing. The other thing is each panel, the silicon overlaps, so no weather can get in there. One thing that they do as well, they 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 have an excellent service. It's made in America in Indiana. And so if there's something broken, they will bring it over and over, they will ship it. And so that was a a good, a positive that we felt going through this company.
Say a panel goes out, we can, the maintenance department could actually move that panel around. Say one in right middle goes out, we take one from the bottom corner, put it in the middle, take the middle one out, put it in the bottom corner. So overnight, that's one. We don't need wait for necessarily for their service people to come. So fairly simple to do.
Yeah. All right. So the two companies that we're going with, the company that that is the installer, that they're installing the the sign, their sign stats, and the other one, the sign that's made, it's in a watchfire, and I do believe it's made in Indiana, correct? And so they're a very, a great company that we had a good relationship with over the last couple of months. So here's some products that we did. So the viewing, and I talked a little bit about this. It has the the pixels, it's a ten-millimeter. The cabinet size, it's a two times, two by eight, and that's just the top part of the of the sign where the where our logo goes. The viewing area is a four foot by eight foot. We didn't, we felt like this was a comfortable size. We didn't want too big, atrocious. We just wanted something subtle that that we, that you can come up. And then the total sign area is six foot by eight. It is a single-facing side. That helps us with electric, so we don't have to power both sides. We just have to power the one side. And here's the thing, here's the other kind of things. And so the standard features, the daytime, it runs at seven thousand five hundred. And at nighttime, it automatically dims down to seven hundred. So that's a significant, and we want to be cognizant of that we are in the neighborhood, and I'll talk more about that in a second. The communication, it's a, it's it's run through a 4G wireless, through through the watchfire data plant, to the life of the sign. So that is something that is constantly there, and so that is something that we, that they offer as well. They have a cloud-based software, and this is interesting. And so we can access this anywhere, and we can adjust this. And it's a very user-friendly software program that you can, that you can make interact, interactive displays. The warranty, like I stated earlier, it's a standard five-year parts warranty with a ten-year parts guarantee. Like I said, if one LED light goes out, they replace the panel. So that was a good thing. So one, so it's not like a, they, they're, they're, they're definitely proactive. And so we we appreciate that that is the company. That is all I had. I think, oh, the timeline. This is, this is the timeline that we were doing it. So the donated funds have been received. We did receive the donation of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And again, I cannot, I cannot thank. I cannot thank enough. I mean, I I almost was brought to tears. I I was very blessed, and I can't say enough good things. So Mr. McKee and I, we also attended the borough meeting. We wanted to make sure we had a necessary permit. So providing that, they provided us a tentative approval. They're pending the receipt of any necessary borough permits, but Mr. McKee just informed me that they, that he just submitted the necessary paperwork for the required permit. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, it's their next meeting. Go, go ahead and, and, because they don't see any problem. They just, because they do have a ordinance about something being too bright and lack of that, it's very annoying to other people. But seeing that this sign does it, it's a, you know, a formality, I guess, to get up the, you know, our permit.
I also noticed, too, when I go to work early and I go, I leave late, the lights on the church are always on. And so there's a bright light that's flashing out. So I don't think our sign will be as bright as that. But we just told them that we can make arrangements just to make, so we're, we don't, we wanna, we wanted to cross our T and dot our I's when we went to the borough meeting, for sure. So right now, the board approval of the design and any questions that you have about the marquee, and once that is, we'll we'll move forward with the installation. Usually, it will take four to six weeks, and probably in springtime, we we could have it up. So any questions? Yes, Ms. Jack?
Of course, concern with any cloud-based program becomes security, right?
Yes.
So obviously, they, the company has security measures in place, I would assume?
I would assume.
And when we are accessing it, those security measures are offered to us through their system?
I would assume that, but I but I will definitely clarify that prior to that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a cost?
For the, for the.
To run the work?
Just electric. So.
Mr. Wolfe, Mr. McKee, if you're attending a borough meeting, do you have any problems with the permit? See this building right here?
Yeah.
We just own it as a school district. We donated it to them, so you may want to remind them.
Now, they were asking, you're very cordial with us. Certain days, we hated them coming to talk to them personally about it, as opposed to just submitting the paperwork and so on.
Right. But I'll, but I'll remind them.
Also, biggest thing in the whole project was these five parking spots. It took about a year and a half to get that cleared.
I hear you.
Appreciate all the time and the effort.
Absolutely.
That's an amazing effort and job well done.
Thank you, Wolfe.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Speaking of Mr. Wolf and also the school community, tremendous. All right, our last item. For now, at last, at the last board meeting, it was asked of me to look into our gifted and talented program. We know we made some changes to it from the previous year to this year and we continue to evaluate it. So I'm going to have our supervisor, Special Station, Mr. Dan Saabek, come and give us an update on that. Saabek?
Good evening, everyone. Been a long one so far. But first, I want to start out by thanking our current gifted and talented teachers. I can't really say enough about them. I really appreciate all their hard work and efforts this year. And I know my conversations with families this week, they reiterated their, you know, concerns are not with the teachers. They can't say enough good things about them. So again, I really thank them for their efforts this year. So with that in mind, we've been evaluating our current gifted program, speaking with families, speaking with the teachers, speaking with administrators. And we, you know, we uncovered some concerns with the current format. So we're looking at clear defined responsibilities and parameters within the gifted, you know, having the split positions that we have right now. We were looking at the planning, the preparation and the training of our gifted teachers. We were looking at the gifted teachers supporting our students at the competitions and events, as well as communication. Right now, we have six total, you know, staff members involved, so that's various points of communication. So when we look at all those things and we look at our current model, you know, we can't address all of that, you know, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We looked at what we could. We are implementing some training opportunities. We've included some more collaboration to help support them. And again, the teachers are going above and beyond, you know, given the situation. But looking ahead for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is where, you know, we're looking at all of our options and what our best way to move forward. So within our current special services staffing, we do have some options available to us. And essentially, I feel like we can address pretty much every one of those main concerns that we laid out. I know the biggest question would be staffing. And some of the options that, you know, I've worked through and developed could be anywhere from having half of that amount, which would be three teachers, the whole way down to one teacher. I can't give you a definitive answer right now simply because I, we need a school budget passed for next school year. And then when we have that budget passed, I can make a recommendation, possibly a couple of recommendations to Dr. Oberg and we can discuss it and move forward, you know. With a strong gifted and talented program, you know, speaking with Mrs., what Mrs. Walters used to do in the past. She did an awesome job and, you know, she was excellent at it. But again, continuing to build on our current, you know, layout as well, but advancing, you know, our gifted program. So at this time, I'll take any questions or.
How many grade levels is our gifted teachers supporting?
Right now? So we have, in the elementary, we have one in each building. So we have Joe Walker and that range is all of ours, so second through fifth. And then also at Claysville, we have, we have two that split in that building and those grade levels. And then we have one at the middle school, high school. And then we have our two school psychologists working to help coordinate those events and planning. So that's six, that's six total in our current layout.
But we only have four teachers.
We have four, yes. Well, one school counselor, three teachers. As opposed to the model before, we just had one teacher, Mrs. Walters.
And they're responsible for all grade levels, right?
In their roles. So like, for example, Mrs. Osko is responsible for that second, third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade gifted students.
But just the Joe Walker?
Right, just the Joe Walker, correct.
And she, I assume, also has a full-time teaching position with normal students, right there?
So she does have additional responsibilities. So that's one of those things that we identified, right? With the clear parameters and responsibilities of the job as a barrier that we have right now, right? It's almost like you're in a situation where you're picking, you know, how to service students. And that's one of, with the options, I believe we can come up, we can eliminate that barrier.
It's always, in my opinion, that whenever you add additional duties over above the current duties of the person, something suffers.
I would agree.
Either our regular student in her class is suffering, which would be what I would assume, or the gifted is suffering, or both. What we have to understand is individuals, if they have a full-time position and you add something additional to it, you need to drop something from whatever they had before. Have we done that?
To this school year, what we currently have, the model that was implemented at the beginning of the year, those additional gifted duties were added on to them without things given, taken from them. I recognize that this is an issue.
Did they volunteer for these?
From my understanding with Dr. Rycheck, she just assigned the position.
But you just did say previously, earlier here, that that's one of the things you're looking at.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And the, and focusing on now.
Yes.
There, a position for a gifted teacher, quote unquote, was not budgeted for this year.
Correct.
It's not within the current budget.
Correct.
Just to make sure everybody understands that. But you're looking at what we can do to address some of these issues right now. And that's one of them, correct?
Right.
And then at the same time, as you're addressing the current issues with where we are within our current budget and what we have to work with, also looking at how we may do this differently with the budget in budgeting for the next year.
Right.
Am I hearing that correctly?
Right, so in the future, so again, we're doing what we have available to us now to support the model that we have. And we have taken some steps, but we recognize that right now, it's not a perfect model. Looking ahead to the future, you know, within our current staffing, so special services staffing, you know, we're going to, and I've already begun this with our school administration, but we're looking at it from the, you know, how can we intentionally use our teachers and maximize our current to possibly get that allotted time that Mr. Leisure was just speaking about, you know? And again, what does that look like? Could it be, you know, one staff or could it be two staff? But again, having the dedicated time, you know, built in, dedicated to the gifted program.
As well as training opportunities for them for that specific duty.
Correct.
So if we're adding additional training to them, that means we're adding another additional item on their agenda. So we're not only giving the gifted program, but we're giving them training for the gifted program. So that all takes time, right?
It would, you're right. So again, I think there's a little bit of confusion because of this year's model, right? So we are, for example, we have our Act Eighty Day Tomorrow gifted has some time set aside for collaboration and training opportunities. So, you know, that's how we're utilizing that time. I'm trying to think also, big picture, what this looks like moving forward. And, you know, it would be hard to switch everything up in February of this school year and change a model that's in motion. But moving ahead, looking ahead, I believe strongly that we can put something in place that is not only, you know, fair to our teachers, but also fair to our families and all students. Not just gifted, not just the learning support, not just the reg ed. The idea is to put a model in place that would be fair to everybody.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Just to be clear, you said we have two teachers at Claysville for second through fifth. We have one teacher that takes care of the middle, the entire middle school, high school.
Mm-hmm, correct.
It's different model.
It is.
It's, so when we say high school, there's actually not classroom instructional time.
Right.
For our students, it's just the sixth, seventh, eighth grade that will have that. The primarily what the students in the gifted town to do at the high school level is compete in competitions. And again, as we heard from our families, it's not so much that they're concerned about the instruction that's been provided. And again, credit to those teachers that are involved in it. It was a coordination between our two school psychologists who do the legwork on the competitions, you know, bringing those groups together. We just had one this recently that combined elementary, middle. So again, we recognize there's some areas within that model that need to be improved. That's what we're working on for the next school year.
How many students do we have in our gifted program?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two divided by three?
Four.
Four.
I would highly recommend we hire permanent positions for this position and have it in the budget for next year. And I'm assuming that it did, that a lot of people I don't think aware of. And I apologize, I don't mean to shoot the messenger. I know you're new in this position. Whenever you assign a teacher additional responsibilities over and above their current ones, when they're currently working hard, the morale of that teacher and the morale of every teacher in those buildings decrease. Is that not a fair statement?
I believe that's a fair statement, yes.
So we're always wanting to have high morale and retain teachers, but yet we shoot ourselves in the foot by assigning teachers additional responsibilities. I'm sorry, but this whole program this year is very rare course. We seen a few slides earlier where we had our advanced students dropping down. I would assume our gifted people would be in that advanced class. Even dropping down, if they're dropping down, we, I personally mean that a person in that position may bring them back up.
Those scores though are not reflected in this year's model.
I understand that, I understand that.
In fact, just to clarify.
Those scores were based on having a teacher, I understand.
Just to clarify, that's correct. So what we're talking about here is the gifted and talented, which again, was brought to the board last year as positions to absorb. This board voted on it as part of our budget cuts that we've done every year. Every year that I've been here, we have trimmed those, and that was my instruction, every year, look at those positions and where can we trim? And that was positioned brought to the board, the board agreed to, just to be clear. I, and I'll extend on that and know that we are looking at this with Mr. Saabek to say, listen, we can do better. I will though push back on the fact that it's blurred the morale in the buildings. I don't believe you can say that with the generality, that one person, because again, we're talking about individuals. We have one teacher in Claysville that has one student, in addition to her caseload. So.
The one teacher with one student, so we have.
One teacher with one student and she also does not have the maximum number that she would hold as a special ed teacher.
So we have twenty-one students with the other two teachers.
Gifted program, and I don't believe I'm the speaker there.
Madam President, I understand that, but I don't need to be schooled on not being an educator and having the best interest of our students.
Okay.
And I honestly, I'm appalled that you always tell us that. Based on your education, you are all stupid when it comes to other things pertaining to school. That is not true. We highly understand what's going on. Just because we're not in education doesn't mean that we don't understand.
I didn't say that you didn't understand. I was merely offering another perspective.
Bring a very positive thing to this board. No, we're not educators. And I'm glad we're not all educators.
So am I.
We have to have a group of very diverse individuals so that all of our students come away with a positive aspect, because there's no one student to thank.
Okay, I, can I make a comment? I understand you're giving the ball and you're running with it. We have seen, this board sitting here has seen the ups and downs. I think we realize something has to change next time. And you're going to offer us change.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saabek, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, with that as all I have for committee, Madam President.
Madam President, I have several wishes I'd like to address in committee. Since a lot of times we're not able to address in this board meeting.
If you are speaking as a community member, you will need to address them during public comment time.
I'm speaking as a board member in a community, in a meeting prior to our board meeting, where we have a committee meeting where we should be able to talk about them. And so one of the things that's been on my mind for a good while, I've had a couple of different individuals reach out to me and said that they would be willing to and think that we need to implement a Bible release program in our middle school. I think it's a great idea. We have with Claysville and Joe Walker. And as they go from fifth grade to sixth grade, it's kind of dropped. And with some of the issues that we've recently seen, I think this would be an awesome program. So what I'm trying to do, it's too late to do anything this year because they end their programs in March. So I would just like to have this board put something in place so that we can do that next year, beginning of the school year, if this board is so inclined.
I've also talked to several people in the community. No, I'm responding to you.
I don't respond, I'm not them.
Well, I've also, I've also talked to several people about the Bible release program in the middle school and high school. And my, and they are currently working with the administration and putting together a plan to bring to us for next year. So that is being addressed.
What's amazing, these two individuals don't know a thing about.
Well, I would suggest that those two individuals get perhaps the individuals who are working with the administration and maybe they can all work together. So if you, you and I can get together, share those names, to get those people together.
So what really needs to occur, their biggest problem, from what I've been told, is the ability to let the students and the parents know there's a program in place. Years ago, I don't know how many years, but a lot of years ago, it was eliminated at Claysville that they was not allowed to come in and talk to our students and pass out flyers or whatever. That was the thing to do back then. But we need to collectively somehow come up with something so that our students know that it's available and our parents know it's available to the community. Because they said the biggest thing is the more awareness that they have that it's there, the more people there.
I totally agree.
And Wash I has like fifty-some kids in their middle school in this program right now. So I think, I would like to see it put on the agenda for next board meeting that we adopt something so that it's set in place so that these individuals can go ahead and do what they need to do to be ready.
I think Mr. Leisure's asking for middle school for next year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Again, in talking to the group to whom I've been speaking.
Again, in talking to the, the group to whom I've been speaking, they're working with the administration and getting ev- all of, everything ready to present to the district in order to get it approved. So, I think, I don't want to, I don't want this to become a thing of competing groups. I think they need to be working together, and that particular group is not ready, they may be ready by next month, but today I know that they're not. Because they're still working with the administration, so I think it would be, would be good for you and I to help get these two groups of people together so that they can all be, they have the same goal. So, that they can all achieve the same goal and not be limited by what we're telling them we need on our timetable.
I understand that, but I still think we need to have something on the agenda for next month, so the board can go whether they wanna do this or whether they don't. And then we can move forward, and they can develop, and we can develop with them, whoever, however, or whatever.
I, I just have a question. The board has already approved the Bible release program, that's done.
For the elementary, and we do one for the.
I know, but all of the Bible release programs that I know of are all elementary. I think it's great if we move it up the boards, but I, I've never heard of any that were in the upper levels.
No, all they have to do is present a letter asking for permission.
Okay, and not in progress.
That is, with the groups to whom I've been speaking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to leisure, if I may, because I agree with you, I think there should be something, but I don't think yet. I think once they put together what kind of program they even have to offer, they're still in the process of creating something that they can even offer. I think if we voted on anything next month, it would be too premature. We don't know what we're really getting into. I wanna see what they have to offer before I say, yes, I want this.
I have a lot of movable parts, when you're talking about that. So, they're looking at all of that, and I know, Mr. Bonus, they've talked with you. Um, so, I think we just need to link these two groups of people together. Let them work out all of their details, and let them bring it to us on their timetable.
It would've been nice to communicate to the board that if this wasn't occurring, I would say. The next item that I have, um, when are we gonna hire a police officer or armed guard for the middle school? I'm very disappointed because I felt like the board was taken advantage of. Because we was told that if we increase the pay of our police officers and give them a contract, we would then be able to have a person in the middle school. That's not the case. We've given increases and raises. We've given them benefits, and we've given them contracts. We've spent a lot of taxpayers' money, and we still do not have that position filled. I wanna know what we're gonna do about it and how we're gonna fill it.
As to not filling it, uh, any other board member can speak, but you, you can't, you can't invent what you don't have. We have one applicant who then turned down the position. And we don't, and you heard the officers earlier say, they have the same problem. This is not a McGuffey problem, this is not a, McGuffey hasn't done enough. There is, there's no applicant. So, I do believe, having said that, that, that Dr. Ober has something he is going to present because it deals with personnel in executive session on the top, um, but that's where we are currently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And again, because it's personnel, it will be addressed in executive session.
If I may ask a question, when we post for the position, where does it get posted at? I know we've shared things on Facebook and things like that, but where does it get?
We, we have, we have exhausted everything that, that we're aware of, that Chief Sumis is aware of.
Okay.
I wanna include Mr. Vanata because he's been helpful in this as well. Um, we've had a, a few that have shown interest, that, that have been spoken to. We did have someone we thought very much was going to be the next middle school. And, um, as we all know, th- those that sat there and interviewed him, he took, did not take that position. And that was gut-wrenching at that point. Um, what we're looking at today is option B, as I shared with the board a couple of Fridays ago, which is looking at, instead of a retired police officer, which has always been Plan A, under the contract that we agreed to. Uh, Plan B would be to have an armed security guard in that role, uh, at a different number. Um, that hasn't been completely fleshed out, which is what I wanna share with the board and executives. Um, and we may have someone that would be interested in that position if that is the case.
Okay, but do they get posted like the Observer Reporter, in the, like, any kind of, like, where, like, where at all?
So, we, how much we spend, Laura? We spent nearly a trillion dollars in the Observer Reporter posting that, and we got that.
Yeah, okay.
From my understanding, with Chief also.
Well, and the other thing that we found, um, is Chief has talked to two individuals, one at Connersville and Chief I refer. But, but the point there was the distance. Because, a- again, just, we, we recognize that, right, that we're pulling from a pool where many of these officers, even if they're in the Washington barracks, are coming from north or, or east of that. And so, uh, there was an individual that Chief had spoken to, shared with him what he had, he just retired, but the other day for him, it was the drive.
Thank you.
Mr. Vanata, you've got sixty assets.
Yeah, I thought that today you've got sixty assets. And thirteen jobs.
Is there pay similar to what our?
Uh, it makes thirty-five dollars an hour.
We don't want.
Right.
Sixty against thirteen positions, did you say?
Yeah, fifteen jobs.
Yeah.
Well, my biggest concern is, we always say safety is key in number one, but you can say it forever, but until you put actions in place to make it happen.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say this, um, I take offense to that, that that is being said right now, that there hasn't been actions put forth on behalf of the safety and security of this school. Every action that we possibly could take, from the time that I took heat from both sides of increasing the pay so that we could actually find someone to take this position, because that was the issue initially. And then from there, we have tried everything, so to say that is saying that your superintendent has not taken this fully as, job number one besides the education of students, and I, and I take offense to that.
How many months has this position been working?
Mr. Leisure, a- again, you just heard it from the, the shares, you've heard it from others. We have scoured this, we, we've talked to individuals, we thought we had someone there. We thought we had someone, we interviewed that individual at the end of the ninth, and in the eleventh hour, he pulled out. So, it's not as if we're not doing something. Matter of fact, what I'm presenting tonight is, again, another plan, we didn't wanna go down that road.
Well, my concern is when we have a position that's been vacant for that long a period of time, if in the future, we can't find the exact person for the exact thing we wanna do, I would've been happy to hire one of these rental agencies to have a security guard walk our hallways for a very reasonable rate, just to have somebody there. Um, that's where I'm coming from, so I was not aware of what was gonna happen in the executive session, so I'll hold that. The next item I have, and it pertains to that, I indirectly, is I've had an awful lot of phone calls from parents saying that we have a bullying problem in our middle school. Um, and I understand that this has been went over, and you've shared emails with us of what we're doing, but if we keep doing the same thing over and over and expect different results, it's not gonna occur. And I think Mrs. Shingle says it best when she says, doing the same old thing the same way doesn't mean good, maybe you need to look at it and change that. So, I don't know if any other school board members have heard any of these comments? Um, I have, and I think that this is not, it, it didn't occur. This has been a long process. We've had problems in the past, and I believe they're currently gradually getting worse. So, I think we as a board need to look at that and see what we need to want to do.
May I answer your question?
You may.
Thank you. I have spoken to multiple people about this issue, and I can tell you, of all of the people to whom I've spoken, I have spoken to one parent who felt her daughter had actually experienced bullying. Everybody else, it was, well, I've heard so-and-so said, my brother's neighbor's cousin's, you know, whatever. No direct personal experience. Of all of them, including the one parent who felt her daughter had experienced bullying, none of them had talked to anyone at the school. Not a teacher, not a principal, no one. None of them had filled out the paperwork for, um, the bullying. Some of them didn't know where that paperwork was, some of them said they had seen it, that, um, that they knew about it, but regardless, none of them had talked. Because that's always the first question, and you, you have said this yourself, they have to follow the chain of command. We as a board can't just reach down in, um, and assume that there's a credible problem when there's no direct evidence to suggest that there is a credible problem. To my knowledge, Ms. Dr. Ober, do we have any official complaints of bullying in the middle school or elsewhere in the district?
When you say official complaints, so.
We're filling out the form.
Uh, no, filling out the form, no. But a- a- are there, are there issues that are brought forth as bullying, absolutely. And I'm gonna speak on behalf of the middle school, who's not, not speaking at this moment. Everyone involved in the middle school, from the administration on down, again, has the same priority. Besides their child's education, and everyone in six, seven, and eight, there is nothing more important to them than the safety and security of their students. And on a daily basis, and I think you saw tonight with the DARE presentation, what is being done, we're not standing still. And I have said this too, that there are things we can do, so we're introducing a series of four nights, because the, the area that I will tell you, Mr. Leisure, because I appreciate that, bringing that up, is right now, it's being dropped at our doors, and we're saying, now do something about this. And we have been, but it can't just be the school and exclusion of our families, and we recognize that, we recognize that. So, as Ms., uh, Dr. Chetwell brought up, we are going to, starting in March, bring together experts that will come in so they can speak to our families, because if we're doing this just as a school without our families, we're missing that opportunity. And so, that is an area, I, I, I will join you on that. There, there are things that we can do to improve, and we are doing that. We're, we're looking at an anti-bullying program, actually something we put out in the past, but because of the cost, we didn't. But now, as we're looking at this grant o- opportunities, this is called the PCCB grant for, for mental health, for school security, um, with, uh, Mr. Dullian and with our ministry staff, we're looking at a, a curriculum that potentially could be K through twelve, in addition to all the great things we're doing already. Um, I, and I've heard those issues, I've heard people say, bullying is running rampant, and this is why it's happening. And I can tell you, again, if they haven't spoken to us, and oftentimes, here's the other thing. I've spoken, I spoke to a mom just, uh, Tues- Tuesday, and she was telling me about bullying that she believes has been happening since fifth grade. And I said to her, I said, so, she's just been robbed of innocence recently, and I said, well, who'd you tell about this? Well, I haven't told anyone. But this has been going on for months, and I said, if we don't know, we can't help that situation. But again, that goes to that communication piece that we have to have with our families, right, that we have to help them help us. So, it's a two-way street, and that's what we're working towards. So, to your point, and I appreciate you bringing it up, um, I think we are doing things, we're continuing to do things. Again, tonight, the DARE program is one step, but I think it's an important step forward for that.
We've also talked about giving some kind of a video, an informative video to put on the website to help parents get some of the information that they need.
Right.
As well. There's lots of things in place, um, but I, I just would like to say, in addition to that, um, do you? I was frustrated in talking to a lot of these people. What I asked, who'd you talk to at the school? No one. That's, that's the first step, I can't take that step for them, um, so.
It doesn't matter what field you're in, if it's not documented, it didn't happen.
Exactly.
You do not have a documented, you have, you're never, it's, it's something you can do.
Sorry, how many of these parents are being directed to that form? Because I've spoken to many as well, we had two families last year come and speak at the board about the bullying issues that they had. Nobody was ever provided direction to go fill out this form, so we can't say there's no formal complaint. People aren't told, please fill out a formal complaint about this. They, they take phone calls, they've had email communications, they have notified people, but yet they still felt the problem was never resolved, or their student was made to feel like the one who was in the wrong. And I think the policy should be reviewed, I, I think policy two forty-nine could be changed. I think it could be, I think it could have verbiage added to where perhaps staff is supposed to say, if they get a complaint from a parent, they, one of their options is to provide them that form.
But it's in the handbook, though.
I understand it's in the handbook, but I don't know to go look for that.
Well, I think that goes back to, we talked about doing the informational video.
But we could also change the policy so that staff is required to inform parents of this form.
That's only known when the staff gets it. I, but these people haven't talked to any staff. These ones here lately.
But the ones I did have, is what I'm saying.
Well, I don't know about what happened in the past, it was a completely different board.
This is.
And different administration, we can't go back there.
But I'm saying policies can be changed now for moving forward. And that's what I'm suggesting, um, I think it would be.
I think, and you can, perhaps the solicitor can answer this, but you don't, I don't know that the policy necessarily needs to change. I think you have a policy that kinda designates, um, like, how the situation's gonna be handled. But at the same time, if there's day-to-day operational, like, guideline, pol- procedures on how you utilize those policies.
Right.
I think we could direct the administration to review those and make sure that our, our administrators and our counselors know that they need to, um, let parents know about this form and the process if they feel they wanna go that route. But I think that's more of a day-to-day operations of, of, of guidelines of how to implement the policy, does that make sense?
Okay. The other suggestion that I had was, when you go onto the McGuffey website and you have your categories to pick from, staff, community, parents, under the parental tab, there is a option to go to, um, important policies and forms. I think we could add that form to that category. That was actually one of the places I went to look when I found the, the form itself in the policy. I thought, well, maybe it's in another place where a parent might go. I mean, if I'm gonna go on the website and look for something that I should see, I'm gonna go to the parent tab. Um, it's not there, I think we could add that there, and then even, you know, staff could even say under the parent tab on the website, or what have you.
But I think that goes back to us giving a directive to the administration for them to review how they are using.
Correct.
That form and the, the policy.
Correct.
That's the company's form, and how they can, um, make that more accessible to parents.
Correct.
That covers all of that.
Right.
Done. I'll have it done tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's an easy spec, that's a great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a couple of other items, and what I'd like to say. What? Student, square on the meeting. Um, whenever I bring up something that's negative or something that's not maybe viewed as positive, I would hope that everybody wouldn't take it personal. What I try and do is bring up items that I think we maybe need to improve on. I'm not saying that we're not doing a good job, or we haven't done any. I'm saying is that we just may need to do better in these areas, and.
Perhaps if you made those comments without trying to.
Make it sound all the time as offensive. I mean, I'm here to try and do the best that I can for our students, whether I bring it across in the right way or not, maybe I don't, maybe I need to improve that, but. I did, our teachers and our administration and our entire district have done great things. And I'll be the first one to stand here and say, we've done great progress through the years. But you also have to realize, I've been from a philosophy of, for forty years of continuous improvement. We want to continue to improve every day to make it better and better. Because if you don't, there's no staying stagnant, you're either moving forward or backward. So, that's just all I have to say with that area. One last thing that I have, I would like to hand out. Um, we talked about non-budgetary items, and I believe Mr. Vanata brought it up at the last meeting. The new board members need to be aware of this funding, that would be going anywhere.
All right.
With our amount of funding, there isn't any, but, um, this is the Esther Street money. Um, and it was currently designated for four individuals. Assuming that there would be some attrition that would take place, that would destroy this month, but that hasn't hurt, so. hurt. So if you look at that paper, there's four salaries invested in there. It's not in this budget, and we will not have this money next year, but we will still have people in these positions. It's four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, almost half a million dollars. So between last budget and this budget, we're going to lose four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars moving forward that we don't have. And the people in these positions are not needed. They'll be here. So we'll have to absorb four hundred and basically twenty-two thousand dollars into next year's budget. Um, that's something to be aware of as we talk about things that we want to implement and improve in the future. Um, I just wanted to make all the new board members aware of it, because we've, the older board members have been aware of it, but it's it's a large chunk to change.
Thank you for that, and I look forward to the the presentation of the preliminary budget and how we are planning on addressing those issues. So thank you. At this time, the committee meeting is adjourned at eight twenty PM. We will reconvene at eight thirty for the regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, some rerouting. Call to order, the regularly scheduled board meeting on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at eight thirty PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fry.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Turn.
Present.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Slade. Present.
Mr. Varnik.
Here.
Ms. Tingle.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Venata.
Here.
As we stand, um, just so I let everybody know, the board, the majority of the board had um decided that we would like to begin our board meeting with a prayer from a pastor or minister from a church within our district. So tonight's prayer will be led by Pastor Rennie from Clayville Christian Church, if he wants to come forward, and anybody who wants to participate.
I just want to do, uh, say thank you for the privilege, uh, and honor to be here and to be able to lead everyone in prayer. I also, uh, was in and saw some of the pictures of the sign going in, uh, the church beside it, that's the church that I'm pastor of. So you have a little competition on the light, apparently.
[laughing]
Let's uh, let's go ahead and and open with prayer. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just humbly come before you, God. I thank you for the members that have uh had had wanted to um include you in this. Lord, I pray a blessing upon this district. I pray a blessing upon this board, Lord. I pray for unity. I pray for guidance and wisdom going forward and the decisions being made, Lord. And I thank you for all that you're going to do through this school now that uh things are um being under you, Lord. We thank you. We praise you in your precious heavenly name. Amen. Thank you.
Congratulations for the text.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to go ahead and do your? I'm going to, um-
Did you public comment?
Is it okay? Did you public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we're sure. Um, we did the middle school recognition. Do uh, we have a high school student council rep who's probably gone, so he's-
I know, I'm on a, I'm on the clock. Um, Nate Rumsen had to leave, and he had a good reason. I got a text from his mom. He's um, he had a a call, a Zoom call, and I I I'll spill the beans here, Mr. Dalton, we're talking to Nate, uh, Rumsen, the guy, the young man who normally does it. He was accepted into Syracuse School of Communications, Syracuse University. Syracuse University. Which, everybody knows that's one of the top communications programs in the nation. Uh, you know, a lot of sportscasters, ESPN guys, Mike Tirico, uh, Sean McDonough, you know, a lot of sports guys, a lot of TV news people. Uh, Syracuse is well-known for its uh school communications, so uh he was one of a few, so we're very proud of him, and he wasn't gonna, I was gonna tell him, I said, you should tell him, you should tell him what you do, you should, you should tell. But he had to leave, because he had a Zoom call with them, so I said, get out of here, so I'll do it. Um, just a couple things on the school update, um, to update you here for Nate. Um, our CDL program's off to a great start. All four of our student drivers passed their permit test on the first time-
Nice.
-and next week they get behind the wheel, and they'll be on the road shortly.
Very nice.
So, couldn't, um, yeah. Yeah, I can tell you, it's going to be the, between the hours of like, uh, eight thirty, eight thirty and eleven thirty. It's, I can tell you where they're going to be, but no, the kids are, the kids, the kids are doing a great job, and this was the first hurdle for them to get over in order to make it work. So, um, and like, they went up to the DMV on, um, I think it was Tuesday, and they were done in twenty-five minutes, and the people at DMV are like, how'd you get done to it, like, quick? And that's how good they are.
Please let them know the board's that congratulations.
Yeah, I will. They, but that that's working, that that program's working pil- perfect. Uh, Mr. Powers, Bill Powers, who runs it, they're, they're good guys. They're really doing a nice job. Um, a hundred and five seniors will be presenting their senior projects tomorrow between eight and eleven thirty up here before the panels of the faculty, staff of McGuffey School District. The drama production of Cinderella is slated for March fourteenth through the seventeenth, which includes a Sunday matinee. So Cinderella's the the musical this year, or drama, dram- dramatic production. Um, our first NHS blood drive was a success. We had twenty-five student and staff donations, so I think Mrs. Le- Leepard came out and followed run, and they, we followed the format put forth by the board. We're hoping for the one in April to be even bigger, that we can put out a call for parents to come in. So if your, if your chi- children want to donate, we'll put a raptor system up, obviously, if they're at the front tower, and then the the parents in the, late in the afternoon can come in and do that after the kids are done for the day. So maybe we can then compound it. And remember, one donation is cut three ways. They separate the plasma, they separate um the red blood cells, and there's another part of it, so when every, you you triple your effect every time you do it. So, and NHS was happy to get up and start running it again. Um, we'll be hosting Washington and Churney High Schools for the McLimpics next Friday here in the high school gym. That's a, that's a um event that we have for our life skills programs at all three high schools. And then our high school gym teachers and our students and our special ed teachers, they all get in, and it's sort of like an Olympiad, there's lunch, it's, it's a great event. Um, the sports update, great winter sports season. Our rifle team were section champions. Um, they competed in the WPL playoffs. Um, individual medalist was Riley Dunn, took third place this year overall. Riley's also won the senior WPL event for all WPL seniors. She's, the young lady, should be going on a full scholarship to the University of Nebraska to shoot rifle there. So she's won the individual competition twice. This year she was third. Wrestling was a section runner-up with an overall record of fifteen and two. Uh, we lost in the the quarterfinals of the WPL team tournament. Wrestling individual sections um began this weekend at Burgers Town, starting at nine AM. Girls, uh, so another winning, two back-to-back winning programs, and two more. Girls' basketball finished fourteen and seven, made the WPL playoffs for a second consecutive season. They play Saturday in round one of the WPL playoffs at Beaver Falls at twelve noon. And lastly, the boys' basketball team finished fifteen and seven and made the WPL playoffs for a third consecutive year. They play round one of the WPL playoffs at Mohawk Monday at seven PM. So a great winter sports season, um, some good things happening here uh at the high school, and it looks like the spring, um, we have some good teams coming back, um, in track, basket, uh, baseball and softball. So pretty exciting, pretty good sports here for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have public participation on agenda items, chief.
Madam President, we have one, Becky Jordan.
I'm going to wait so you can recognize the family, and I will present during the-
On agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes all, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Jordan, for that consideration. At this time, I need a motion to hire Nate Perry as varsity head football coach for the fall sports season, as per the MEA agreement.
Oh.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
We've got first M. B. C. experience, holding these three a day. Everything probably deserves the award. For one hour and a half, waiting for meetings, but not very happy, because we got, we got chips, we got water, we're good. All right, um, it's my privilege, um, to introduce our next head football coach, uh, Nate Perry. I've had the privilege of coaching with him for eight years, um, he is a home run. I'm going to tell you that he's one of the top strength coaches, maybe in the nation.
At the high school level already, uh, here, here's what I tell Doc, and he knows, he's heard this a hundred billion times, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give them to you in order. Here's my qualities for a grade coach, number one, kid magnet, because if you don't attract the kids, you're not, it, you're not gonna be successful, okay? And number two is a time spender, because if you're worried about how much time you're spending doing that job, you're not gonna last very long. Uh, number three is be able to communicate. Uh, it can be a lot of different ways, it can be spoken, it can be written, it can be in today's world, in, uh, you know, group, uh, uh, you know, sendouts and sendbacks, and then, um... Fourth, and, and, and probably not, not least important, but ve, but, but not the most important, is the knowledge of the sport. So, um, Nate checks every one of those boxes. I've known him for eight years, he played football here for Derek Bonner, he was a very good football coach, a very good football player here. Derek Bonner cannot say, uh, uh, I went around today, I, I did some work, um, uh, Derek had nothing but positive things to say about him. Um, his coach at West Lib, Coach Monty, would, would be here, um, if his schedule wasn't that way, that's how much he thinks of Nate. Um, probably your number one quality that you need as a head football coach, for your life to be good the whole way through, is a supportive wife. I've never seen Christine miss a game, she yells at Nate just like I do from the end zone, so that's really good, she knows the difference in a sweep and a pass. And then, the three allies he's got right now, Lucy, who's very well under control, um, uh, Callie, who just had cheddar chips and water, and then Nate's other assistant coach will be unpaid, but he might have to put on the non-call list. Uh, Baker, who delivers many pre-game talks for our team. I, we, I proudly introduce Coach Perry for a few words to speak to everybody, Coach Nate Perry.
Thanks, Coach. Um, I, I'm, before I get to football, I'll, I'll try to make it quick, um, I haven't had the opportunity to do this, um, in front of the whole community, and I, I feel that it's necessary. I got to, to do it in front of the high school last year, but, uh, um, unrelated to football, my, my family has been through a tremendous amount in the last year and a half, and, uh, um, I, it's, it's been very difficult at times, and it still is. Um, but we, uh, we would not have, we wouldn't be here right now, we wouldn't have survived without the, uh, McGuffey community, um, and all the support that we've had through our tragedy. Um, so I wanted to take a, a minute because, uh, I had the opportunity to, to thank the entire McGuffey community and any, everyone in, uh, who was involved, um, with, with all of that. Uh, I, we, my family thanks all of you very, very much, and anybody else that's watching, so, uh, I would like to give the McGuffey community a round of applause in that regard, so, thank you. Um, and in relate, in relation to football, um, when, in two thousand and fourteen, when I, uh, my first day substituted teaching, I mentioned this in the interview the other night, first day substituted teaching, um, Coach Dalton came, and, uh, he found me in the building and asked, he asked me to coach football. And, uh, honestly, it was, it was probably one of the best decisions I ever made, um, and, because I, I could not have had a better mentor. Um, as excited as I am to take over as the head football coach, um, I'm, I'm gonna really, really miss being on the sidelines with Coach Dalton. Um, I mean, it, it's, it's really tough to, to be letting him go, um, but I, I am looking forward to the future, so, uh, let's take a moment to give Coach Dalton a round of applause. I, uh, I, I know, I know he wouldn't let me say that to him face-to-face, I wanted to take him in, but I, I love you, Coach, I really do, okay? Um, but, um, you know, in terms of me taking over, all I can say is I am extremely excited, um, we're gonna be getting after it as soon as next week. Um, you know, winning is extremely important, and, um, we, we want to be successful, there's no doubt about it, but the most important thing, um, as a coach, is to build meaning, meaningful and positive relationships with, uh, the athletes that play for you, and that's, that's my number one goal, um, and always will be. And I can promise you this, that I will do, I will always care, um, and do everything I can for, for the, any of the athletes in the school as, as long as I'm the head coach here. Um, because, honestly, when it's all set and done, uh, the people that you, um, that you deal with and the people that you meet along the way is, is really what it's all about. Um, you know, what, what, in terms of the people you coach with and the, the athletes that you coach, and just those meaningful and positive relationships is definitely, um, the most important thing, at least it is to me. Um, so I cannot wait to, to get started, and, uh, thank you, um, to the, uh, the McGuffey administration, and thank you to the school board for, for choosing me as your next head football coach, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I would like to say one thing about Nate, we interviewed his first teacher years ago, and he was a young man, and in that interview, at the end of it, he told us, he was, his goal was to be the McGuffey head football coach. And, and I just think that, because awesome role model, because he set a goal years on, I'm making, I'm interrupting that. But he set a goal way out, but he instrumentally achieved what he needed to do to get that goal, and I couldn't be more proud of him. Um, I think he'll be an awesome coach. Maggie, Mrs. Leger, appreciate that, I'll send you down.
Congratulations, Jim. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty four school board meeting as submitted. Don't move. Second, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from January eighteenth to February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, check seven eight seven eight three to seven eight nine oh five, in the amount of five hundred ninety six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and twenty three cents as submitted. Second, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, check seven seven three one to seven seven three five, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, uh, fifty thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars and seventy three cents as submitted. Don't move. All those in favors, wait, Nate, we have a second, a second, okay, thank you. Sorry, a little delayed processing on my part there. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of January twenty twenty four as submitted. Don't move. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the G. O. B. series twenty twenty one bill listed February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, check two one zero four eight through two one zero four nine, in the amount of a hundred and forty three thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars as submitted. Don't move. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the DARE program for McGuffey School District. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Dr. Ober, an information on tenure, so?
Madam President, I have the honor and of introducing, announcing the tenure permanent professional employee status, has been earned by Justin Wise, Justin is a middle school English language arts teacher. As a result, was three consecutive years of satisfactory teaching in the middle, in McGuffey Middle School, and fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Pennsylvania tip.
Congratulations, Justin. Need a motion to accept a three thousand, five hundred dollar donation from an anonymous donor to pay for the use of the Wild Things Park for the baseball team for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year season. Part of the terms of McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two, gifts, grants, and donations. Don't move. Second, okay. I did ask Dr. Ober if he would address this.
Sure.
Just for clarity purposes.
So, uh, an anonymous donor came forth, uh, with a total of seven thousand dollars, the thirty five hundred is our portion of last year's, uh, baseball budget, uh, but allowed, allocated from us for the Washington Wild Things. So when that, an anonymous donor came forth, the Washington Wild Things then cut us a check back to us for the thirty five hundred, so that is something to receive back.
And so it's that that will then be used to budget for the current...
Could, could use that for the coming, using that check back.
Okay. I know there were some questions about this, so does anyone have any other questions? Chris, that's an, an amazing thing. Um, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to accept five hundred dollar donation from Range Resources Volunteer Center Program for Joe Walker Elementary, for the terms in, uh, McGuffey School District Policy number seven zero two, gifts, grants, and donations. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the items donated from the Perriman Manufacturing Company to the McGuffey Agricultural Mechanization and Engineering Technologies Program at the value of twenty five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Part of the terms of McGuffey School District Policy number seven zero two, gifts, grants, and donations. Don't move. Second. Any discussion or questions?
I just think this is incredible.
Oh, it's amazing, same thing, yeah. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the additional revision to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five McGuffey High School Academic Handbook as presented. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, motion carries. Do we have need of an executive session, Dr. Ober?
Madam President, I do for personal...
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, rescinded, we need to execute a session at eight fifty one P. M.